Mayor of Plano City Council's preliminary open meeting is reconvened in open session and that all council members are present. Our first item on the preliminary agenda is consideration and action resulting from the executive session. We have none. Our next item is the stuttering awareness presentation by Landry Champlin, Miss Plano 2021. Welcome.
Hello, welcome. Good evening, everybody. My name is Landry Champlin and I am Miss Plano 2020, 2021. I am a preliminary title holder within the Miss Texas, Miss America Scholarship Organization, and I'm so thankful to be here to speak to all of you today about my experience within the Miss America program, my job as Miss Plano, and my mission, the Live Fearless Foundation and the Live Fearless message. Now, not many of people know that the, that the Miss America Organization is the largest provider of scholarships for women across the country. And in the state of Texas alone, we award over $100,000 of college scholarship funds to our title holders and candidates, and I'm very excited for the opportunity to compete for the job of Miss Texas at the end of June. But I'm even more thankful for the opportunity to have served as Miss Plano for the last two years. I was crowned Miss Plano on September 1st of 2019, and because of the COVID-19 pandemic, the Miss Texas competition was canceled in 2020, so I was very fortunate to continue to serve as Miss Plano for the last two years. And to say it has been life-changing would be an understatement. As y'all saw on the program, it was listed as a stuttering awareness presentation, and that was not an accident because I am a person who stutters. And so my mission as Miss Plano is to empower everyone I come in contact with to live fearlessly. And this came about by my own experience living fearlessly as a person who stutters competing within the Miss Texas Organization. For those of you that may or may not know, this program is heavily rooted in public speaking. And so I started competing when I was 14 years old, and prior to that experience, I struggled to speak in front of my class. I struggled to order my own food at a restaurant. Anything that had to do with public speaking, I shied away from because of my speech impediment. And so because of the Miss Texas Organization and the opportunity I had to step outside of my comfort zone and live fearlessly myself, I now am not only serving as Miss Plano with the mission to empower everyone to find that same fearlessness, but I have also published a children's book entitled Fiona, the Fearless Fox, which is about a fox named Fiona, and she empowers her fearless friends to step outside of their comfort zone and recognize their unique talents, and she empowers them to become their most fearless, most confident versions of themselves. I am also the founder and president of the 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, the Live Fearless Foundation. And what we aim to do is exactly what my mission is as Miss Plano. I want to work to inspire the students of Texas to become their most fearless versions of themselves by awarding them with scholarships so that they can take part in opportunities that empower them to do so. I am also the creator of an online platform called The Fearless Files. It is a blog, podcast, website where people can go and they can look and find the inspiration and the resources that they need to step outside of their comfort zone and pursue the passions that make them feel the most fearless. And most importantly, throughout my year as Miss Plano, I've had the opportunity to work with the city of Plano through Plano Arts and Visit Plano in an effort to empower our wonderful city to be the most fearless that it can be. So thank you all so much for having me. If you would like to learn more about my year as Miss Plano and the work that I'm doing to empower our great city to live fearlessly, you can head over to my website, www.missplanotx.com. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Landry. Thank you, Landry. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for representing Plano like you do. Our next item, comprehensive monthly financial report for March 2021. Denise Tackey, Director of Finance.
Good evening. I'm going to start showing my screen with you.
You're on mute.
Um, I'm not actually.
We got her.
Can you see my screen? Can, can you hear me?
Denise, keep talking. Or, yeah, there you go. Go up. Now, now it shows you're on mute. I feel your pain.
No, we still can't hear you, Denise. I'll tell you what, why don't, yes, Mayor, why don't we pivot to the next item and then see if Denise could come downstairs and we could try this after the encore item?
Yeah, I'll come, I'll come down.
Whoa. There you are. Hold on.
Oh.
There you are.
I was?
Well, long.
I don't know. I don't know what was going on.
Yes.
Can you see my screen, though?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the comprehensive monthly financial report for the month of March 2021. We do actually do this report on a monthly basis. However, I present to council on a quarterly basis, so you'll hear me comparing from the prior quarter because that was the last presentation we had. So this first slide represents our revenues compared to budget by fund. The general fund has revenues of $217 million for the first half of the fiscal year. This represents 74.5% of the total annual budget. The reason that's so high, it's not at 50%, is because of the majority of our ad lib arm taxes are collected in December and January, so they're reflected in this first quarter. The Water and Sewer Fund has $76 million in revenues, and that represents 42.7% of the total annual budget. Again, the Water and Sewer revenues go up in the summer where generally people are watering more and it's warmer out. This slide represents our expenditures compared to budget by fund. The general fund has expenditures of $120.5 million for the first half of the fiscal year. That's 43.5% of the total annual budget. And the Water and Sewer Fund has expenditures of $62.6 million, which represents 44.3% of the total annual budget. This slide actually represents our net change in fund balance for the past three years. In the general fund for the first half of the fiscal year, the fund balance has increased by $79.5 million. You can see that we're doing better in fiscal year 2021 than we have in the past two years. This is because we began to collect our ad lib arm taxes again in the first half of the fiscal year, but also it's due to receipt of CARES funding. So we did receive some CARES funding last year, and we received the second amount of CARES funding in the second quarter of the fiscal year. The Water and Sewer Fund balance has decreased by $6.7 million. This is worse, this is the worst position than we were in at this time in the prior fiscal year, which had this fund at a $3.3 million decrease. So trending a little bit worse at this point in time, but that's primarily due to the fact that we haven't been collecting late fees for the last year. We're just now starting that up again and starting to hang our blue tags on doors and trying to get people on payment plans. So we should see that begin to improve. The Environmental Waste Services Fund has decreased by $2 million, and the Municipal Drainage Fund has decreased by $301,000. So this is our general fund revenues, actual compared to actual, and they're lower than the prior year by $4 million. There was an increase of property tax revenues by $4.8 million, and additionally, sales tax revenue was down by $874,000, but we did have a positive audit adjustment of $745,000 in the first six months. Other major decreases in our revenues include our court fines are being down, are down by $833,000. This has been something that we have seen throughout the pandemic as there were less people driving, less traffic and delayed collections. Franchise fees are also down by $1.3 million, and the city overall has seen decreases in rec fees, athletic revenue, rec member fees, and city pool revenues. Our general fund expenditures are lower than the prior year by $15.4 million, so our personnel costs decreased by $1.4 million. That was offset against a reimbursement against expenditures of $9.7 million that came in the form of the CARES funding. Public safety payroll costs are being substantially, that are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responded to COVID-19 public health emergency, were allowed to be reimbursed from these CARES expense. So that's primarily what helped us with this. Overall, we've seen decreases in expenditures as all departments. We haven't been spending as much on travel and training, and everybody's just had a general tightening of budgets in this last fiscal year. Here, we're looking at our Health Claims Fund. We had an increase in our fund balance of about $1.5 million. This is mostly due to a decrease, decrease in expenses. As you know, not as many people are getting out, going to the doctor the first six months of this fiscal year, but we do have a healthy fund balance that is of about $22.9 million in the Health Claims Fund. Unemployment rates in December were at 5.4%. We have seen them increase slightly in March to 5.5%. This is our more recent sales tax information. The sales tax I talked about before was through the first six months. This, however, is for the month of May. We're down compared to the prior year by 0.87%, but this, this is a decrease of about $67,000 over the same period last year. However, there was a very large negative audit adjustment of $1.5 million. Otherwise, we would have begun to see the recovery in our sales tax numbers. So it's really unusual to have that large of a negative audit adjustment. We just happened to have it right as we were starting to recover. So our real estate market recap shows the number of days on the market was 33 days in December. That's compared to 27 days in March, so it's not, how homes aren't staying on the market as much as long. And then the percent of asking was at 99% in December compared to 102% in March. And as long as I have been giving this presentation, which has been quite some time now, I've, I've never seen it go over 100%. So the average selling price for a home in Plano was at $477,838 in December. This has now increased to $513,850 in March, and the price per square foot in December was $164, and it is now $177 in March. So we're seeing a substantial increase in the real estate market at this point in time. Our hotel occupancy tax is down by $2.2 million compared to the prior fiscal year. Again, this industry was hit particularly hard because of COVID. Hopefully, we're starting to see some of that rebound back up, but this represents a 55.2% decrease over the prior year. This is our equity and treasury pool. It's basically our investment portfolio and how much of each investments are owned by each fund. The enterprise funds own, own 11% of the equity. That's going to be funds like Water and Sewer, Municipal Drainage, Environmental Waste Services, the golf course. And then our largest share of equity is always in the Capital Projects Fund. That's at 29%. So the Capital Projects Funds are where our bond proceeds go into, and that also includes our capital maintenance fund. So we typically carry a significant amount of money in those. We'll also see this go up in the next quarter as we get our bond proceeds in with this coming sale. The proceeds will be received in June. And then the general fund has 22% of our equity. Our investment pool portfolio maturity shows that we're, we have it very much spread out to manage our cash better. Our portfolio has a book value of 500, or 660 million as, it was 590 million as of December 31st, 2020. It's now gone up to 661 million as of March 31st. Again, that's just representative of collecting, you know, more funds and tightening the belt on the, on expenditures, so we're have, we have a little more in the portfolio. And then this is our portfolio diversification. As we like to show this, just to show we're very diversified. Again, we have to follow the Public Funds Investment Act, so we're very conservative with how we invest. We can't invest in the stock market or any risky type investments. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Denise. Any questions for Denise? Councilman Williams?
Thank you very much, Denise. I've heard anecdotally about what's happening in the housing market, but I hadn't actually seen any figures until tonight. Any idea what's causing this, but more so what effect this might have on our upcoming budget year in terms of appraisals from the CAD?
Well, in the, we're, we're actually looking at an increase in the appraisal from the CAD right at this point in time. Of course, there's the, you know, the COVID exemptions. We don't know how many people are going to apply for those or actually qualify for them. There has to be like a, well, not the COVID exemptions, but from the freeze, there has to be a 15% decline in value. But I think we're going to continue to see the property values rise. Part of it is that housing just isn't available, so the housing stock just isn't out there as we have so many companies moving here and people moving into the area. So a lot of it has to do with, with that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Our next item is the Encore update. Paul Hernandez, Area Manager for Encore, welcome.
Good to see you here. I didn't know I was going to have to follow Landry, so I apologize about that. So she's going to queue up the presentation. Okay, so I wanted to come visit briefly about the, the winter event we had this past February, and this is a pretty short presentation, so if you have some questions, they may be answered, you know, in following slides, so maybe we'll, we'll take the questions at the end, so if that's okay. So some of the things we'll, we'll talk about is our communication process and challenges and the rotating outages that we announced at the beginning of the event, also about our critical load customers, and have an update for you on that with regard to Plano as well, and then also why some customers were not impacted. That's, I know a lot of curiosity on that. So just a quick overview. Encore is part of the ERCOT, ERCOT market, and we are a delivery company, a transmission and distribution, delivery utility. We basically measure electricity onto the grid from power plants, and that could be wind or generation, you know, typical fossil fuel generation or somewhere, and we measure electricity used by customers. Again, we are the delivery company, and then you also have the third leg on that stool is the retail electric providers who actually sell electricity to customers, and they buy the electricity that they sell on the wholesale market, so. So this is the interesting part of the presentation. This kind of, this shows you basically the load shedding event that, that we faced during, during the coal snap. There you'll see an arrow pointing to before the load shedding began of how Encore had to preposition equipment and materials and personnel. We actually requested almost 2,400 off-system full-time employees to come assist us in preparation for this event because, you know, we knew it was coming. We were concerned about the possible ice and the things that might have on our delivery system, and so we, we really ramped up our preparedness on this, and we opened up our emergency centers as well. Then you can kind of see as we move forward, this was Sunday night into Monday morning where the load shedding event began, and the blue columns represent the total load shed of the ERCOT system. Of course, this, this storm did cover almost all of Texas, so it did affect the entire ERCOT system, not just North Texas. And then the red line represents Encore's load shedding requirements by ERCOT. So just keep in mind, Encore is about 36% of the ERCOT system with regard to load, so we're a pretty heavy part of it. There you see in there in the morning, starting at 1:45, I'll just say briefly that we were asked to begin shedding load, and so we made a very quick announcement about that, that load shedding and also that it would be rotating outages. And then, then, of course, what happens is just, you know, several minutes after that, we're asked to shed almost 10 times the amount of load that was initially asked. When, when we got to that point, it really became difficult to do any type of rotating outages, and we went to a controlled outage system, so, and I'll address more of that in the next slide. So that mentions there that, you know, at the peak, 20,000 megawatts were, were shed, which was about five times larger than the 2011, for those who were, who were here, the 2011 event. So just something, I'm a 36-year employee next month and never faced an event quite like this one. So Encore ultimately, we had to shed 7,200 megawatts of load. You may ask, a megawatt serves somewhere between 600 and 700 homes. So just to kind of give you some scale, affected 1.3 million customers of our customers, and it was just, the load shedding was just necessary to keep the grid stable. If, that was our number one priority. If we don't keep the grid stable, if we don't keep the grid up, you know, this becomes, even though there is a lot of concern and fallout and hardship and even death that, that the ERCOT system faced, if we, if we, if we have a full-blown blackout, we would still be recovering from that as well. Instead of recovery and, you know, mostly we recovered it within the week. We still had some customers that needed to be addressed beyond that, but a full-blown blackout would have caused us, you know, weeks and months to get the, the electric system back on. So the number one priority that ERCOT and Encore had to address was making sure we did not go to a full blackout. And as I mentioned before, just the sheer magnitude of the requirement of the load shedding really prevented us from any rotating outages. We were protecting hospitals, and as far as I know, we did not have a hospital in Plano or Collin County out, which was a good thing. And that was one of the lessons that, from 2011, that, that was brought to our attention. But we, we did have a lot of facilities that were out, but at no choice. I mean, again, in my 30, almost 36 years, I've never had to, to pick up the phone and say, I can't get your electricity on right now until we've got generation back up. And at that time, we did not, so. So the generation could not support the load on the system. We take our direction from ERCOT on load shedding, we, you know, to the keep stability of the grid. And we do have a pre-planned process. We, we follow a plan on the load shedding event, and all, all that was followed. So again, it, it mentions here on the emergency side that with the, with the grid, with as much generation as lost in the grid as it was, it was virtually impossible to rotate outages. You're trying to keep everything stable. If you, if you rotate outages during the, the massive amount of load shed that we were under, you come, come in danger of losing other load and losing even more of your customers. So that is kind of the reason, well, that is the reason why several of our customers had long extended outages for, you know, a day, several days, three days. We just could not get those rotated. As the system stabilized a little more, as some generation returned, we were able to begin some rotation, even though it wouldn't be every 45 minutes, maybe it was every two or three hours. That did start returning somewhat through the, the event itself. So what we're looking at here is the, the industry on how we're going to handle responding to these load shed events of this magnitude. Again, I think this is probably a 30-year event, you know, so that, there's a lot of decisions to be made on, on the entire market itself, but we're going to continue to work with the gas industry to make sure that their, being their, their accounts and those things are, the, this load shedding is not an impediment to keeping their services on, and also a better understanding of what our city's needs are. Right now, I'm actually participating on an internal committee to address outreach and to make sure that we have accurate information, it's not outdated, and also how to sustain that going forward. One thing, of course, you know, Plano staff is always ahead of the curve. I actually started working with staff shortly after this event to review their accounts, and that's before I think we even started to get a handle on it. And we've done that. I was able to provide all that information to the city, and they have already actually replied with new accounts that they want on the system. I will say that this is something that we're going to take in the, a council viewed as public safety accounts with regard to, you know, police, 911 centers, water, those sorts of things. We did add a substantial, I would say it increased, probably more than double the, the current list we had, so that was a good update that, that we were able to get. So that's something that we're, we're working on as well. Encore's, we're also working on developing. We, we have a ton of data that we're, we analyze, and we're trying to see how we can leverage that to minimize the future load shed events and better communication. I know this was one concerns. We were on a call shortly after the storm. I thank Mark Esersen for setting, requesting that and us having, being able to talk through some of those concerns. At the time, it was a, again, an unprecedented event, and it wasn't that, you know, our top management wouldn't tell me what's going on. No, they did not know when we would be able to see generation back. So it was something that Encore had to follow direction from ERCOT because the generation kept falling off, and we had to keep shedding load. kept falling off and we had to keep shedding loads. So just a, a very difficult circumstance. We are working on better communication efforts though, to try to communicate to customers what we're facing, what the possibilities are. And of course, we know the cold snap was a long sustained, at least 70 hours, several days there, so. And then another concern through the, the whole event was, there were folks saying, why is downtown Dallas lit up like a Christmas tree and other areas like that? So, you know, communication on, to customers to conserve through those type of events, that's, that's something that, that's coming as well. So that's, that's kind of it. I wanted to leave some time for, for questions if you had, if you had some for me.
So you explained how, why you couldn't do the rotating outages, right? But I think there was a lot of confusion by people about how you went about choosing, you know, which neighborhoods stayed on and which neighborhood stayed off. And, you know, I think there was a lot of people who thought, well, if I'm near a hospital or if I'm near a fire station, but then we had fire stations that, you know, lost power too. So can you go into a little bit more detail about how that works, about why, you know, somebody on one side of the street may have not had power for days and their neighbors across the street had it, you know, the whole time?
Sure. That's a great question. And, and I spoke briefly to Councilman Richard Delly on this, you know, actually during the storm, but it's a very good question. We have a, a plan to, on our load shedding program, but we also have a safety net and I'll, I'll go into that in just a minute. But we have a cross the system, across neighborhoods, across cities, counties. Our, our system was very equitable to, to load shed. Now, back to that, where, why folks didn't go out. And I will say, you know, my home did not go out and I was grateful so, because I was able to help other people and try to get some questions answered. But we have a safety net on our system. These, there are special relays at our substations. Let, let's set the winter storm aside for just a moment. On a blue sky day, maybe even a nice spring day, there might be a lot of generation offline for maintenance and fueling or whatever they need to do in the system. But, you know, they look at weather forecasts and things like that to, to prepare daily for load on the ERCOT system. But if you have a, an event where one or two or more generation plants trip offline, we, we need to take humans out of the equation to protect the grid. So our, we have about 40% of our system is covered with special relays, they're called under frequency relays. And they will operate automatically if there is a under frequency event that happens. That might, and those, those are spread out throughout our company. I just happen to be on one, I think Richard Delly was on one, and there were some folks. Now, there were other feeders identified with hospitals, 911 centers. We purposely kept those on as we could. Now, that doesn't mean they weren't subject to shedding because everybody was subject to shedding because of this event, if it had gotten worse or if we'd lost more generation. And that will also go, I want to also say with those accounts, the safety, public safety accounts that I mentioned earlier, those are not, we, we do want them identified, we want to put them in our plan, but they're not exempt from being shed in an emergency event. So that's, that's our safety net. Those feeders had to be kept on through the system because if another power plant or two tripped out, again, we had to take the humans out of the equation and the system has to react automatically to avoid any blackout. So those special relays, which are around 40% of our system, have to be available to react to some sort of loss of more generation. And that had to be, that has to be available every day, but especially during the winter event, when we're more susceptible to possibly losing even more generation. So if you understand me, it's a, just an automatic quick thing that those relays have to react to. And that's why those folks did not lose power because they happened to be on a under frequency relay feeder. Now, I will say, it's not a great advantage to be on under frequency relay feeder because if something happens, you're the first one out. But in this case, you stayed on because we had to have the ability for the system to react automatically, if you want me. So that's a great question.
Mr. Hernandez, I, I don't envy you in standing there and having to answer our questions about Encore and ERCOT, but I, I do want to ask you a question after I give a little comment. My husband passed away two days before the winter storm and it was through terminal cancer. And he could not be without heat. And I guess it was a blessing in disguise that he passed before our lights and electricity all went out for three days. I, every time I think about this, it traumatized me because I keep thinking, what if the electricity went out and I can't keep him warm? So my question to you is, we have amber alerts. We have ways that we use cell phone communication or emergency situations where we could communicate with our residents and tell them that there are certain emergencies that's beyond our control. So why is it at this point, those type of emergency and communications are not set up to communicate with our resident, to let them know that some type of a shutdown or a, you know, a, I guess a release of load, that's, I guess that's the way you put it, is not communicated to the resident so that they could prepare? You know, it's not so bad to be out of electricity if we know. I think transparency is what most people are really angry about. Had we known, we could make plans. And, you know, if, had I known, I probably would have tried to get my husband into a hotel earlier or tried to get him into a hospital. But because we don't have that information, that causes a lot more distress and a lot more stress and probably more anger from our residents. So is there something at this point, instead of saying, well, this is a 30 or 50-year event, it's probably never going to happen again? Are we now prepared? Are we now prepared to be transparent so that we can let our residents know how to prepare for disasters such as this?
Well, thank you for your question. I do want to emphasize that Encore does not operate or own any generation. We're, we're just a delivery company. So with the loss of generation, that's what required Encore to shed load. Okay? Just want to be clear on that part. Encore did a lot of communication. We, we do have apps and a communication system, but I will say it was overwhelmed. In all of 20, 20, I, I forget the exact figure, but we received about two, two and a half million calls to our center. Just in the week of the, the winter storm event, we received over 3 million just in those four or five days. And that, that system was overwhelmed. Our, our, the telecommunications company that is probably the largest in the world was, systems were overwhelmed. So, and they kind of went through a, a communication shedding type event as well. So there was communication with regard to what our actions will be, but is there room for improvement? Absolutely. Is, is there something more that we can do to better prepare our customers? Absolutely. And that is something we are striving and working on and have been working on since the event. So more to come on that.
So what are some of the solutions have you come up with?
Things that we are working on is like hardening the, the communications system. You know, we, we do have an app that, that pushes information to customers. Hopefully, you know, more participate with that as well. But we, we have an immense amount of data. We're also looking at, is there different ways to communicate and be, as you say, be more transparent with our, with our customers? It, it's something that is a work in progress that, you know, we're, we have, we were going to have to report to our cities and to our regulators on, on those actions and improvements that are, that are yet to come. So thank you for your question.
Councilmember Val.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. You know, the, your algorithms, right? Your algorithms that determines when and how and where to shed the load? Do you have a map that you can publish so that people can see?
Yeah, we, we do have an outage map online for normal outages. But as far as the, the plan itself on where to shed and things like that, that's, that's all proprietary information. It's, and, and that's, that's a, it's, we have a dynamic system. It's going to change from month to month, from year to year on where those different feeders are. Of course, you know, there's new facilities being built all the time. I've got a, a list of over 30 facilities in Plano that we need to add to that public safety list. And so with the dynamic system in place, it, it's, it's something that we're, we have, you know, we, we are dedicated to, to fixing and to make, making sure we're being transparent and making sure that we have everything documented. But as far as where the feeders are and things like that, that's, again, it, it's a plan that we have in place, but it's not public information. And for security reasons, there's a lot of our mapping systems that are not available to even the cities because you're, you know, open records, it's, it's for security.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Paul, kind of a follow-up, Councilmember Val touched on something I was thinking about. I recognize the proprietary aspects of, of what you're talking about, but would there be a way, because you do have the app and everything else, that when something potentially was coming, that to, to blast out, to notify the, the customers that, that you know that are potentially going to be effective, not, not just like an hour or so, but, but could be like off for several, several hours? And the reason I think that's important is I take my house, for example, you know, we were without power for about 30 hours. Thank you. But initially, we didn't, we really didn't know how long it's going to last. So like, you know, Councilmember Two had said, you know, had we had someone on life support or just that really needed to have power, we would have not known that. And so we might have stayed and stay, and been there longer and then it may have been too late to, to make an arrangement. So I, I think it'd be good if, if the customers could be notified that potentially, if your, this is coming out and your power goes off, be advised, it may be a while. It may not be just one of these where it goes off and it's off for 20 or 30 minutes. So I think just something like that, I don't know if that would give away any proprietary nature, but i- if you could do some type of, of a broadcast like that to the customers, because you, you have to know that people are on these special relays to at least let them know that if something goes and the power goes off, potentially it's, it's not going to come back on in, you know, 10 or 15 minutes.
Yeah. Again, I'll, I'll, I'll say that the Encore grid, the Encore system was ready to serve customers. I explained all the, you know, preparations we made, the manpower we brought in from out of state. This was a, a generation issue. I mean, when we're told to shed, we have to shed. So they didn't see it coming, you know? We definitely didn't see it coming where the, we would lose the amount of generation that we had to lose. I wholeheartedly agree with you on the communication aspect of it. That's something that, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at very, very, very closely and hopefully, you know, we won't have a future event. But if that does happen, you know, of ways we're going to need to communicate and what we communicated at the time. You know, we, we have meteorologists now on our, on our system. So it's something if we knew that, I, I mean, we just didn't know, we were going to lose that generation. So it's, it's, it's so difficult to, to say, you know, that we weren't prepared, but we were, but the communication aspect could have been better. And I, I agree with you for folks to make plans and things like that. We did not know when the generation would come back so we could turn folks back on. We, we, we just didn't know. And I was, we, we were all up around the clock waiting for more generation to come online so I could make calls and say, your power should be on in the next several hours or whatnot. And that's just something we, we could not do. Again, could not control.
But let me ask you a little bit different way here. You, you may have, have answered. So would we, could we reasonably assume that like my residents and my neighbors, whatever, that, that were affected for hours and hours and hours during, during this shutdown and understanding it was a, you know, 100-year, you know, event? Would it be prudent to assume that something like this potentially coming again, those of us who did go through hours and hours and hours without power reasonably might expect that same thing could happen again because I, I would guess that we are probably on one of those relay type, you know, switching things that, that will shut down, you know, in the event of an emergency? So would that be a, a good assumption that if, if we experienced an inordinate length of time without power this time, that in the future, we might want to think about making other arrangements?
You know, I would say definitely two, two points. Our messaging is going to be different, it will be improved, it'll, you know, it's going to take the side of caution and, and ask our customers to prepare. But again, I mentioned earlier, we have a dynamic system. So what affected, you know, this last February may not even be the same thing in the fall because every, every spring, we're, we're making adjustments, fortifications, improvements to our system for load growth and, and also for, you know, maintenance, for reliability. And we're, our grid is becoming more and more automated each year. And so load gets moved around. So things, it's a very dynamic system. You may not even be on the same feeder this next fall that you were on this spring. So that's really more true kind of up in our area. But even in Dallas where there's a lot of redevelopment things, you know, again, it's a dynamic system. So I, I see your point on that, but the next time around, you may be on a different system, a different part of the feeder, a different part of the substation or whatever, and it actually may be a different situation. It's not, it's not a system where, okay, this happened to me last February, you know, in three years, if we had another event, same thing should happen. No, it'll, it'll, it'll be different. So the system will be different.
Okay. Thanks for the update, Paul.
Councilman Gray.
Mr. Hernandez, thank you very much for being here. I wanted to add a couple of notes as you get into your committee on communications to see if I can't provide you some information that may help. I sit on the North Central Texas Council of Governments, which is 16 counties, and I chair the Emergency Planning Preparedness Council. And interconnected into that is all the EOCs in that 16-county area. We had a discussion on this last week. Many of them were unprepared and unaware of what was going to take place. And I think that what might help in the future is if your team and ERCOT's team gets together with the Council of Governments that are really all over the state of Texas, but primarily the one I'm interested in, which is North Central, and work with the Emergency Planning Preparedness Team that's there to put into the plans what they need to do and all of the emergency steps that they need to take so we can communicate out to our county officials and to our city officials. I say that because we've become a nation that is way too reliant on a mobile phone. And I was on the team when Ike came into the Gulf Coast and removed a lot of the infrastructure. We said that would never happen again. Katrina and Rita proved us wrong. It happened worse. And what we saw, and certainly since 9/11, much of this grid is, is not mapped for, for specific reason, and that is because terrorists also know that if you take out the infrastructure, you take out everything. We knew that in the military. Take out communications, take out infrastructure, everything goes away. So sending messages to cell phones only work if cell towers are lit and have electricity and operate. If you take out a, a significant grid, you take out- and operate. If you take out a significant grid, you take out cellphone towers. If you don't have cellphone towers, cell phones don't work. We found that in some cases you can send text messages, but you cannot send audio messages because of the bandwidth that's necessary to push a text message to a, to a vocal message. So all of those types of things need to be considered and should be part of the communications plan when, when people have these incidences. The other thing that I would say, and one that I discovered, because like Councilmember Smith, I was out from Monday through Thursday, and, and I knew what to do, so I was okay. But the thing that I noticed every once in a while on a cellphone while it was charged, and by the way, I had a solar-powered cell charger. So I was able to keep my phone operating, is it would say, if you're having an issue, go to the website. But if your power is down, your computer doesn't come up, you can't get to the website. And so really, what it, it does for me is it just adds fuel onto, you know, I'm trying to get an answer. I can't get an answer because nothing's working. And so we have to go back to some of the basics. And I don't mean all the way back to smoke signals, but it's almost there. We, we've become way too reliant on technology, and we can take it out in a moment, and nothing works. So my, my encouragement to your communications team is to work with the Emergency Planning Preparedness Councils that are in, located within the COGS throughout the state of Texas, so that we can respond to some of those things. Because sometimes it simply means, I can't call someone. I've gotta go to them, and we, we need basically a vocal chain. I'm gonna go and see ten people. They're gonna go and see ten people. It may have to get to that if it, if it's out for a duration of time. This was, this was a significant duration of time, but not a significant time like we had on the Gulf Coast, where it was months getting cell towers and power towers back up in the air. So I thank you very much for coming here and making the presentation, talking with us. Hopefully, this is helpful to you as well.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Councilman Brady.
Councilman.
Yes, so thank you very much. I mean, my understanding is that there was every intention of going to forty-five-minute rolling blackouts, and it just didn't materialize. And I'm not sure how much Encore is equipped to do about it, but I did want to ask about the possibility of activating city or regional emergency alert systems that if something like this, doesn't even have to do with electricity, but we expect things are gonna go one way, they go really south, that we can get an alert out. In this case, it could have been simply, rolling blackouts aren't necessarily going to emerge. Be prepared for an extended outage. ETI unavailable.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Paul, for that presentation. Thank you also for, as you mentioned, being available to answer questions during the storm. That was very helpful and helped me to get word out to, to some of our residents, which I, I think helped our, our community. But as you mentioned, I, I, my family was very blessed that we, we did not lose power. That, that enabled us to take in my mother-in-law and brothers-in-law who, who did lose power. But many, you know, many people we know and many people in our community did lose power and, and were, were without it for substantial periods of time, you know, sometimes causing loss of life and, you know, in every case, causing great hardship. You mentioned the lessons learned from 2011 about hospitals. And I know you've received many suggestions, so I won't belabor the point, but just to add my voice to the chorus, if there's any way that the grid could prioritize maintaining power to a network of warming stations, that way people who are displaced due to loss of power have someplace to go. I remember during the storm, the city was, was ready to operate a warming station at the Plano Event Center, but, but the event center lost power. Fortunately, you know, Mayor Pro Tim Prince's church and Councilmember Bow's church and other, other, other institutions in the community were able to, to step up and, and help. But I think if there was a plan ahead of time for, you know, these are, these are things that are going to be treated like hospitals, these are going to be warming stations, that in, when, if the worst happens again, you know, the, the, these would not lose power. Is, is that something Encore might be able to work on so that displaced persons have a place to go?
So you, you bring up a great point. So I mentioned earlier that forty percent of our feeders are on that last safety net that we have to maintain up. So, and then now you gotta look at all the hospitals, nine-one-one centers, and water, and all those sorts of things that must also stay on. So we're, we're down to about sixty percent of what we have that we need to shed between. And we have all these facilities and all these customers that are critical to public safety that we've got to keep on. So now, our, our choice of rotation has become, you know, even smaller. So you can kind of see the challenges that we, we face when an, an event like this, your, your choices become smaller and smaller. And then with the sheer growth, I mean, how much power we had to shed, you know, rotating out just, just became impossible. They really did. So, but to your point, I, I, I understand. Fortunately, the feeder that serves Grace Church was actually recently worked on for some other outage issues. And, and then by coincidence, was also under frequency relay at, at that certain time. So I remember talking to Mr. Iserson, you know, late at night and, and working on these issues, but, and going, you know, up line. But we just couldn't commit because of that shortage of who, who can we rotate? Who can, you know, we've got to keep these on, and we've got to keep the safety net up, that we just couldn't commit at the time to, to keeping one particular feeder on for a, a warming center. It just, it just wasn't possible at the time, just because of the sheer massive amount of load that we did have to. And again, affected 1.3 million customers. So one thing could not allow to happen was for the, for a blackout to occur. So those are being looked at. That's being looked at. We've heard the, the concern about, you know, if we can identify a location, a warming center, things like that. And I, I will say, the city has also submitted some accounts on that safety, public safety, that I, I'm pretty sure that's the intention. So that's something that we're looking at.
Well, thank you for looking into that, Paul, and thank you for the information. I appreciate that.
Mayor, Council, I just wanted to take a moment to, first of all, thank Paul for, for coming out. This shows the, the nature of our partnership and relationship in the community that, you know, it was a tough week, and these, and I know Encore has, has stood firm in answering some tough questions from throughout the community and throughout the region. And, and we're committed to being a good partner and working with them on solutions that will help our community as we go forward and if we face something like this in the future. So I appreciate the, the comments and the feedback on communications. Obviously, that was a critical piece of this. And I will share with y'all that I did call Paul twenty-four hours a day, and he always picked up. So that was, that shows the strength of our relationship. And when he did not have answers, he shared frankly that, you know, he was sharing everything that he had information on. It's not what he could share. He shared everything he had at that time, which for us was, was very valuable and helped us to communicate what we could and what we had to our citizens. But we appreciate Paul's willingness to be a, a strong partner as, as Encore is. And we stand ready to be a good partner in helping find solutions as we move forward. So just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. We appreciate it very much for the information.
Thank you.
Our next item is consent and regular agendas.
Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Protam.
If I may, I'd, I'd like to pull item T, the Collin Creek Final Project Plan, off of the consent agenda for proposed modification. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? All right. Any items for future agendas? Mayor Protam?
Yeah. I, I think we may have discussed this before, but I'd either like an update or just hear about solutions for a safer crossing at Fourteenth Street, right from the parking lots by Urban Rio and across. I've noticed several times crossing there that it just, I think there's potential for a safety issue, not just for pedestrians, but also for cars. It's just a challenging crossing there.
I'll get with Jack Carr and our engineering group, and we will bring back a report.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we will take a recess and return at seven-twenty for the regular meeting. Thank you. I now declare that the Plano City Council has reconvened in open session, that all members are present. We will begin tonight's regular meeting with the invocation led by Mayor Pro Tim Casey Prince and the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by Councilmember Rick Grady. Would you all please rise?
Father God, we thank you that your word says that in every situation, you're with us. And so right now, I ask you to grant peace to every one of our citizens who may be struggling. And I thank you that you are with us tonight. I thank you that you're with this council, helping us to work well together, to listen well to our citizens, and to make good choices for the future of our city. I thank you for the safety of everyone in our community, and I thank you for health, and I thank you for bringing good things to every one of us in our city. In your name we pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Be seated. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Prince, and thank you, Councilman Grady, for leading the pledge and the prayer. We have a certificate of appreciation, Community Relations Commission, Lata Shridharan. Plano is fortunate to have citizens who are glad to volunteer and support the boards and commissions of our city. We thank you all for your time, efforts, and willingness to serve. Thank you very much. Next item is comments of public interest.
Comments of public interest. This portion of the meeting is to allow up to three minutes per speaker with thirty total minutes on items of interest or concern and not on items that are on the current agenda. The council may not discuss these items but may respond with factual or policy information. The council may choose to place the item on a future agenda. And we do have a few speakers this evening. The first one is John Hire.
All those with public comments, please state your name and address. You have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is John Hire. I live at 9620 Gold Hills Drive. I thank you for the time to, for the citizens to address you. I'll start by saying I support anyone's rights to peacefully and legally protest. In Plano, as I understand it, you need a special needs permit, and you can't violate Texas Penal Code 4201 and block roads while protesting. I'm here asking for reassurance that we still have a safe city. I'd like to go back to May 2nd. Approximately 1.2 million have seen the two-minute video. Only a handful of those 1.2 million have seen Officer Tillie's report and or heard city manager who's read the report. Of those, I would argue in large part, Plano citizens still wonder, for those that don't know, didn't hear the report about the gun or taser, wonder why the protesters were allowed to block the road. Lastly, why the police officer didn't do anything to clear the road. What they've all heard is nothing, and they're left to assume they're out to fend for themselves. And they're not safe, and this could be the next Portland. The question is this, when is someone here going to address the city of Plano? From what we've seen last year, I'll give you two scenarios. And I hate to be dramatic, but let's assume any one of us are in that next scenario. It's late July, it's Friday afternoon, four o'clock. And because they didn't see the video, citizens get up to remove their protesters. And they'll go across the street, Chick-fil-A, McDonald's, and they throw something, they paint something, and they start something on fire. Will that be something that we can tell the Plano citizens? What if the next time, in that same scenario, that gun or taser gets mistaken for a gun, and shots are fired? Then what? Will we say something then? I ask someone to have the courage to step before citizens of Plano, and please give us reassurance we still have a safe city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Steve Johnson?
Yes, my name is Steve Johnson, and I live at 7901 Windrose Towers, which is just north of the Legacy West Development. I've been a resident of Plano for thirty-six years, and I'm pleased to say I've never had to come over here to file a complaint. But maybe after thirty-six years, it was time. My complaint deals with the current noise ordinance, and it's not a complaint with the ordinance itself. Instead, it's a complaint with how the ordinance is being enforced. Let me explain. In September of last year, I moved from my house on the west side of Plano to a high-rise condo, the address that I gave you before, which is just north of the Legacy West Development. About one half's block south of Windrose Tower is Legacy Hall, which you may be aware includes an outdoor music area. On Friday and Saturday nights, live music concerts are performed at this hall. And the current noise ordinance specifies the maximum decibel level, and Legacy Hall has been cited and fined on several occasions for exceeding that maximum limit. Now, since September, when I moved in and started to experience this, whenever the noise level did exceed the, and I had a decibel reader, I could tell, whenever the noise level was over the top, I would simply call the local police officer who had been assigned to this, because it's an ongoing issue. And literally, within minutes, he would be, he would come to my fourteenth-floor condo. He would take his decibel reader out, he would measure. And if he confirmed that the decibel level exceeded the maximum level, he would simply go down to the, and speak to the people at Legacy Hall and tell them to tone it down. And generally, they would. So now, while there was an occasional annoyance from time to time, at least I had a way to enforce the ordinance. That isn't till April, about a month and a half ago. In April, I was actually contacted by the officer that has been working this for like six months. And he texted me and he said, you know, will you call the Plano Environmental Group? There's a gentleman that wants to speak with you. So I said, sure. What I learned from that gentleman turned this issue totally upside down. Because what I was told, first of all, was that the environmental group is in charge of enforcing the noise ordinance. And if I ever had a problem with it, I had to call this gentleman at the Plano Environmental Group. And I quickly asked him, I said, gee, so on Friday night at nine o'clock, Saturday night at nine-thirty, if, you know, if the strobe lights are coming up into my condo and the walls are bouncing around, I'm supposed to call you? Are you on duty on Friday or Saturday nights? Well, no, he acknowledged that.
You're going to wrap it up. Your time's up, so go ahead and finish.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, worse, worse of all, sorry, worse was that he told me that any measurement going forward had to be done from the first floor of Windrose Tower. No one lives on the first floor of Windrose Tower. That, the first floor is the parking garage. There's a five-story building between Legacy Hall and Windrose Tower. I'm sure that if I had a freestanding house, that I would have the right to have the measurement from my personal house. I have a condo on the fourteenth floor. Why don't I have the right to be measured from there? And so, I was told that the, and I know the ordinance is to be enforced by the city manager. There's no rule that says the first floor in the ordinance. So I'm appealing to the city manager to reconsider this. And if he doesn't, I've been told that my other alternative is to try to get it on the agenda of the, of the council. So, sorry for taking.
No, 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 I appreciate it. Thank you.
The next speaker is.
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Jerry Kendrick. I live at 7901 Windrose. And I'm here to talk about a chronic problem of loud cars and motorcycles in the vicinity of Windrose and Headquarters, Communications and Headquarters. Last Thursday, on the twentieth, about thirty residents of the Windrose Tower met with Gail Laco, the police legal advisor, Lieutenant Rude, and Sergeant Yule. And I want you to know that we're very grateful for their professionalism and willingness to work with us, and we were very appreciative that that they were concerned with their issues. It appears that the major factor in this issue is that the city does not take enforcement action against loud noise violations. We were told that since the first of the year, a total of two citations, count them, two, had been issued for this violation. That level of inactivity is not likely to change anybody's behavior very much. Moreover, we learned that the city's position is that a violation doesn't occur unless the operator of the vehicle intentionally revs the engine to make the noise. This is a much more stringent standard and appears to be a self-inflicted injury than the Texas Transportation Code that requires only that a motor vehicle be equipped with a muffler in good working condition that continually operates to prevent unusual or excessive noise. I might add that I live on the sixth floor of the Windrose Tower, and vehicles a hundred yards away coming through double-pane glass and over my television are clearly audible and disturbing. That's excessive or unusual. Also, a person is prohibited from using a muffler, cutout, bypass, or similar device on a motor vehicle. Both Ford and Chrysler offer an optional package that you have to pay for to make noise using active valve.
Fifteen seconds.
Which uses a flapper valve to open up the exhaust when the driver accelerates. And it can be tuned to be quiet or loud. Therefore, the operator is making a conscious decision to operate a vehicle that produces excessive or unusual noise. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present this issue, and I look forward to seeing an improvement in it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Beverly Rogers.
Thank you. Beverly Rogers, seven-seven-two-eight Alderwood Place. Thank you, councilmembers, for granting me the time to appear before you this evening. I'm here to actually follow up on an email that I sent to each of you last week and really encourage you to take the time and consider adopting a city ordinance that regulates the installation and use of outdoor residential lighting. The letter I sent last week was in regards to a client that I represent as an attorney. My client is also a longtime resident of Plano and for the last two years has endured a light solution issue. The neighbors across the street have installed very bright outdoor lighting that points directly at my client's home and shines from one end of the house through to the other. My client has tried approaching the issue in a very neighborly manner by going over to the neighbors, knocking on the door. She's written five letters just asking that they meet and resolve the issue and has never received a response. So when she came to our firm and asked for assistance, we advised we'd start with seats and dismissed letters. And we did send two and also managed to get the neighbor on the phone. We hoped that after the phone call and the two letters that we would resolve the issue. However, as of this weekend, the issue still exists. We even reached out to the city for help because Plano does already have an effective outdoor lighting ordinance. Under Article Six, Section Six dash four-seventy-D, there is limitations on how lighting can be illuminated onto a neighbor's property. However, residential properties are excluded from that ordinance. It only covers commercial properties. Almost every municipality that surrounds Plano has an outdoor lighting ordinance for both residential and commercial properties. So we are asking that you seriously consider the negative impact that light solution can have on you and your neighbors, and that we eliminate not the ability to protect our own property, but that we have properly installed residential outdoor floodlights that are pointed onto our own properties and not through the neighbor's windows. And I believe that your actions today can prevent future lawsuits, and it's always beneficial for all citizens when their own city provides relief from problems such as these. So I thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Scott Linden.
Good evening. My name is Scott Linden. I'm at 3905 Bandera Drive in East Plano. And I wanted to bring to your attention an issue in regards to the Rowlett Creek Regional Sewage Treatment Plant. This does not have anything to do with the zoning case. So if you would, it has to do with the capacity of the treatment plant. And I just wanted to, this information has come from the district in several meetings. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention, kind of like the encore guy, as far as the shedding of load. The, the district has said that there's twenty-five million gallons a day, average daily flow coming into the treatment plant, but there's not capacity to treat that. Presently, it's handled by bypassing to Wilson Creek through a single force main. That single force main is about forty years old. It's been identified as a single point of failure, yet it's going to continue to be used for the next thirty years. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention as something to look at. If that fails, and this was from a Hazen Sawyer report that they identified that if that force main failed, there would not be capacity at the treatment plant enough to meet the permit. So it's, it's, it's an issue, and it was also used to justify the present expansion, which is only a peak-flow expansion. Nothing's being done on the average flow. So when additional developments are being approved, this goes towards that average capacity. And already, you're exceeding your average capacity if you don't take into account that single failure force main. And I wanted to thank you, Mark, for keeping the power running at the treatment plant. Kudos to you for doing that, because that would have been a real problem if, if there was an overflow at that treatment plant site.
Thank you.
That was the last speaker for public comments.
Thank you. Let's move on to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda. The consent agenda will be acted upon in one motion and contains items which are routine and typically non-controversial. Items may be removed from the agenda for individual discussion by a council member, the city manager, or any citizen. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the remainder of the consent agenda as recommended with the exception, exception of item T?
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item T. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero.
Item T. Consider approval of the project and financing plan for the tax increment financing REIT investment zone number four, making certain findings, providing a severability clause, and providing for immediate effective date.
Good evening. Peter Braster with the Special Projects for this. Let me call up my presentation really quickly. We're doing this new, since we haven't done this in a year or so. Okay, let's see if I can get rid of that. There we go. Okay, so item T is the approval of the project and financing plan for TERS number four. TERS number four is having to do with the Collin Creek redevelopment project and the area surrounding it. I have a couple of slides just as a refresher, because I think the last time we talked about TERS number four was in January of 2020. And so, again, the mall of projects, of course, is these ninety-nine. Are we not showing it? Or is it just lagging behind? Sorry. Thank you. Well, now we're in sync. Sorry. So the ninety-nine acres, of course, is the mall itself, but the, the zone is quite larger than that. The two major projects that the TERS does fund are two parking garages within the mall. Those are shown here on the screen in the yellow dash, so this one on the east side, which is the rather larger one, about two thousand spaces, and one on the south side. The one on the east side has structures above it and will be, I have a slide further on that describes it a little bit better, and the one on the west side has a park on top. So there are two distinct versions of that. Tax increment financing is allowed by state law, and this is the, so there's, this is my plug for the right terms. A TIF is not a thing. It is the. A TIF is not a thing, it is the concept, but the TERS is the zone itself. And of course, we're talking about increments, and increments are this growth after a certain base year of the avalorum taxes, or property taxes. So all in all, you have, these are the properties within the 300 acres that is the TERS with the 99 there set in the middle. The project and finance plan is based on some parameters that were part of the ordinance that founded the TERS, plus the development agreement and funding agreement with Centurion that talks about things that we were going to do. And so there is two portions of the revenue, one from the city and one from the county. The city is the one that is what we're really going to talk about tonight. And it's estimated to have a growth or a full amount of $129 million over the life of 36 years, and plus 30 million from the county. The county is capped at 30, so if it's less than 36 years to reach that point, that's what it does. The city does not have a cap because we are going to be doing bonding, and I'll get into that for a second. Again, this is about the, the project is about the garages. The east garage, here it is, this is the most complicated thing ever. It is a parking garage, plus on top of it is a street, a restaurant cluster, and multifamily units. So all in all, I'll be back to you to talk more about this in the future when we talk about making this a condominium, and we will be owning a unit in that condo, which is shown here on this slide in the gray. Those are those public parking spaces. Then it'll be free and open to the public. I meant funded vast majority, if not all, by a federal grant that we received via the COG for about $30 million. That grant is 15 million in grant and 15 million in loan. The loan has to be paid back, and we've pledged the TERS revenues to pay that loan back. The west parking garage, I don't have a great picture like the previous one, but it would look sort of like this from the top. It's at street level and that the parking is below. Right now, the developer thinks it'll just be one level below this park. There is a list of non-project costs. This is all the development that's going to happen. So you can see here, the expectation the developer has is that the value of that development will be over $660 million. And here is, I'm going to show you, this is what's currently in the plan, and it shows about $104 million worth of public costs. That includes the debt service for the loan, the garage bond, plus the interest. In Exhibit E, you should see a table of what we think the costs are going to incur for the TERS, so this is what the TERS funds are going to pay for, and the year that they happen in. And Exhibit F is a feasibility study. So this is the projected income for the TERS zone over its life of 36 years. Councilmember, do you want me to continue with this, or would you like to do that?
I can talk about it if you'd like, Peter. Thank you, thank you, although you're welcome. Staff today with Mark and Peter and our outside consultant, Mary, and I want to first say thank you to the staff and the outside consultant, because everybody displayed great creative thinking and open mindedness to improvement of the project plan. The idea that I brought up was that, as Peter just described, there are programmed expenditures within this project plan, but the anticipated revenues greatly exceed the anticipated expenditures, which result in a large unprogrammed amount of money within the TERS that is essentially money that would be legally restricted in certain ways because it's part of that 75% of the increment that goes into the TERS, but is not currently programmed for any expenditure, and in particular, any expenditure in relation to the redevelopment of Collin Creek Mall, which I, you know, as I've said for years, I completely support. The other thing to note is that even above and beyond the amount that we anticipate, the tax increment will exceed the programmed expenses. It's potentially likely that it will exceed it by even more, because these projections are conservative, to make sure that we're, which is good, because it makes sure that we're able to meet our obligations under the redevelopment of Collin Creek Mall, but it also means that we might exceed the programmed expenses by even more than this plan project. I think that money sitting around unprogrammed is, you know, likely to be spent in some way and perhaps not on core city functions, so I wanted to address that issue, and by doing three things. The first, this was an idea of Mary, the outside consultant, I believe, and a very good one, but the first major change that this language makes is creating a reserve account equal to 150%. This is what you see in item number five on the screen, equal to 150% of the average annual principal and interest due each year on the west garage obligations. That will help reassure buyers of the revenue bonds issued on the TERS even more so than they already would have been, and it creates a reserve for a specified purpose, you know, that can't just be spent in any way, which I think is a positive development. The other in number six here is that there would be an amount up to $1.2 million annually once the COG loan is paid and retired, probably around year number 20 of the TERS. That would allow funding of up to 1.2 million of city services, which would, you know, allow us to pay for core city functions with some of this excess money, you know, public safety, roads, you know, environmental services, you know, the kinds of things that, you know, waste collection and all of that that go throughout the city, including in the TERS zone. So I think that would be a positive change that would allow more of this excess revenue to be spent on core city functions. And then finally, if we exceed the projections, or if there's, after the 1.2 million, if there is additional revenue, you know, and I'm reading this again, the staff very nicely worked on this this afternoon and sent this language a little after 5:00, once we were already meeting. So number seven, as I was initially reading it, I was thinking, said that it would be, I mean, it does say that it can be used for other projects as determined by the city council and future final plan amendments. I would love to even perhaps add in number seven that priority would be given to city services to the extent that there's more than 1.2 million that's being spent in the TERS zone. But essentially, those are the changes. I, again, greatly appreciate the staff's creative thinking and open mindedness, really enjoyed the call with Mark and Peter and Mary, and as I understand it, the staff is, I haven't run that last one, I said by the staff, but with the exception of that, is not opposed to these changes.
No, we're not opposed to the changes, although I, so what we're really talking about over this extra that we've come with this plan that the council members are talking about is really about $5 million in total, because once you add all the rest in, we really don't have much left over. The debate becomes whether there is going to be more. Not only is the debate, there could be more, but of course, there always could be less. So we like to always have a little bit of play involved with that, just because we're talking about 36 or 30 years from now, really. And so with that would be changes within two exhibits, so I'm going to presuppose your motion. And so the Exhibit D would change, would add the TERS reserve account and then the municipal services within the project list. It wouldn't assign any money because we don't quite know that yet, but it would be part of a project. And then, so councilmember, Deputy Mayor Protem, I should say, that's where the extra money goes, right? So there's not a projected money.
So that is in there, because I knew we had discussed that, and then I was reviewing this on the fly while we were meeting, so thank you for the clarification, Peter. So it is in there.
So it is in there. So this is the list of projects. So there's that. And then this would be the previous one, in case you wanted to compare. So the number is roughly the same, but it should be added on. And then the big difference becomes this Exhibit E, this is the estimated timeline for project costs to be incurred, and you can see that there's a lot more costs adding up. And so, is there? Yeah. So all in all, you still have the same amount of money, it's just reprogrammed per the council member's suggestions.
And so in follow up on the excellent presentation that Peter just gave, I want to again say thank you to Peter and Mary and Mark, the whole staff, for the flexibility to think creatively on the fly, you know. I'm sure there could have been a temptation to say, no, let's just leave it this way, and that's the excellent staff that we have, you know, to take ideas seriously and to be willing to think creatively on the fly. So with that, I move that we approve the ordinance with the project and finance plan amended as presented.
I signed it.
Second.
Can I ask a question?
You have a question?
I just want to understand, are we saying that this 5 million or whatever is more or less, with this change, we're saying that it can be used outside of the TERS in any part of the city?
No. It can only, in those 36 years, it can only be used within the zone. Once 36 years is over, and if there is any money left in the fund, it would go back into the general fund.
Okay, so it's just after the 36 years. In the 36 years, it still must be used in the TERS area.
Right. But future councils can make a decision within that timeframe of 36 years, how to spend the money. And so if there is a, you know, like, we do a fantastic job, and it's $100 million of unprogrammed money, the council can choose what that $100 million would be spent on. It's not going to be $100 million.
I think the big aspect of this is adding in the municipal services as a project, to be able to pay for services within the zone that might otherwise be paid through the general fund. So this allows for municipal services such as roads, public safety, and others to be listed as a project for some of those TERS captured funds to be able to pay for as part of that project.
Yeah, that's what I was just trying to clarify. If we were, we were trying to say we're going to start using TERS funds outside of the zone, or?
No. And then, of course, you only have, it says pay as you go at that point, so it's whatever we have at that point can be spent. Of course, you can't spend money unless it's part of the project plan, so this is making it part of the plan.
Councilman Gregg.
Thank you. Just a couple, and similar to Mayor Protem's question, and you can let that go really small, because you can't read it when it's really large anyway.
Sorry.
You know, I just wanted to say, this has been an extremely complicated project for the city, and the documents that contain all of this information go on for hundreds of pages, for which there's numerous tables, for which there was a conversation this afternoon with one council member and a few staff that want to change a lot of the impact on the tables. And I don't feel a motion to immediately accept it is comfortable, because I haven't had time to really look through all the tables and see what the really impact is, other than everybody saying, well, it's going to generate $5 million, and we'll use it somewhere. So I'm a little bit concerned about that. I trust the staff. I trust them saying that it's going to be used in the TERS. The concern I have, did you say that there was 99 pieces of property within the TERS?
There's 63, I believe.
63, okay. And so we're talking about property that's outside of the mall area as well, because it's on the south side of 14th and the north side of 15th.
It's from 16, which is where the senior center is, all the way through to PGVT.
Okay, so we've got a much larger span, and the only concern that I had in listening to the discussion is we're focusing in on what does it do for the garages and nothing about what's going on in any of the other locations. So that's my hesitancy and comfort level. It's not that I am opposed to it from the standpoint of using the money within the TERS. It is that I am opposed to doing a major modification that floods through hundreds of tables, and we've had five minutes to discuss it.
So to be frank, the change is very, actually very limited to the monies that were not programmed in the reports that you saw when the agenda was published. So we're really talking about $30 million of unprogrammed money now being sort of programmed into an idea of city services. That being said, future councils can change that at their leisure. So you can change the project plan, it's not cast in stone. If you remember, we've changed the TERS Number Two one several times. So we can do that. The council member wanted to, the deputy, sorry, I keep getting all the titles mixed up. Deputy Mayor Protem wanted to make sure that the future councils understood what the direction we were going, as opposed to just leaving them floating in space unprogrammed. So what we're really doing is programming about $30 million. If a project comes along, whether it be economic development grant or a bridge replacement, those funds can be reprogrammed. What can't be reprogrammed in all of this, which has not changed on this change, is repayment of the bonds and the repayment of the loan.
Okay, well, I thank you for that explanation. I just wanted to register that with this kind of change, it would be nice not to just bring it into a giant pile, dump it on the desk, and say, I make a motion to approve, without anybody reading it.
I have a motion in a second. Correct? Oh, I'm sorry, Maria.
Judge, not judge, I'm sorry. I'm still in my court mode. Mr. Mayor, so I have the same concern. I'm looking at these proposed changes, and I see that there really isn't a very strong, I guess, effect on what's currently being proposed. And I hear that from you, Peter, but my concern is Deputy Mayor Protem heard about it at 5, while we're in the executive session, and saw it for the very first time after the executive session started. I'm looking at it for the very first time right now, and trying to wrap my head around, because I'm not a number person, obviously. And I'm going to trust that you're saying it doesn't make that much influence, but what I'm trying to figure out is why are we bringing amendments on the day we are supposed to be passing a consent agenda item, and then pulling it out the last minute, and now we're supposed to say it's okay, because we've all done our due diligence, but you, councilmember two, you're just a little bit slow, so, you know, you just got to do it some other time. I'm a little bit hesitant about that. I feel like I'm not being responsible to the constituents by not understanding what we're doing. I did understand the consent agenda item, but I did not understand the proposed amendment.
Mayor and council, as you all know, we have a process for addressing our agenda and additional questions on the agenda, where we receive questions Sunday night, staff provides responses hopefully by around noon on Monday. This was one of the items that we had, a few questions that came in on Sunday night that we did provide responses back to council this afternoon for your review, trying to provide that information prior to the agenda this evening. It's always a time crunch when we get to that point of providing information. We try to get that out as fast as we possibly can, but in discussing this today with our consultant, Mary Petty, and Peter today, the, these changes do matter, make no mistake, it is adding a project in, it does allow those municipal services to be captured as a project. But in the substantive project plan with the dollars allocated with some of those key aspects that we have direction previously from council, those aspects did not change in this. So we are still operating within that general guidance, but we did expand what was being reported to council, what was in the packet, to include this other additional option, this other project in there. But the timing side of that was unfortunately just due to our process, our agenda process, but we will try to have that information out in advance when possible.
Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to paraphrase this for the sake of clarity for myself and everyone else. Correct me if I'm mistaken, at any point, what we're looking at on the screen represents the sum total of changes proposed by Deputy Mayor Protem, and this doesn't, in effect, really change anything of substance in the 233 pages of Exhibit A for the item we're talking about, Consent Item T. This just puts prioritization- This just puts prioritization on money that isn't already planned on being used. Is that correct?
I, I wouldn't classify it quite that way, because this is, those are funds, again, we, we had this discussion about the repayment of the loan, and then what happens to those funds after the loan has been repaid. So this was, at that point, these funds become unallocated within the plan. And so the option at that point was, was part of the concern for the Deputy Mayor Protem of what happens to those funds, how are those allocated, and what is the, the direction in the addition of the project to be able to utilize those funds if the increment generates revenue? I'm trying to make sure I get all the caveats, and I'm looking at Peter for this. Really becomes, really becomes the challenge for this. So in that discussion, in looking at that, if the increment exists in that timeframe, this provides a project that would have a priority to utilize those funds. Mr. Braster, please fill in the blanks that I missed.
Sure, so the precise changes are three things. It's, on, this numbered list is already in the plan on page seven, one through four. Number five, six, and seven were added, and they are just a, a roadmap on how to spend the money that is beyond what is already allocated. Then you have this exhibit, which adds two projects to the list underneath the cog loan, the garage principal and garage interest. And then you had Exhibit E changes. That just shows, and I don't think I can show it too fast, but down here, there's an additional stream of revenue that goes on to, into those projects. So, yeah, that's, that was the changes. All the other pages remain the same.
Deputy Mayor Protem?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll keep this quick. I just wanted to say, first of all, these changes would have no impact on the Collin Creek Mall redevelopment, because everything is subordinated to the items that relate to the Collin Creek Mall redevelopment. My initial preference was, was even simpler to just cap our contribution and terminate the TERS after we've completed those projects the way that the county is doing at thirty million. It turns out we cannot do that legally under state law because we cannot terminate the TERS before the revenue bonds are paid off, and we can't pay off the revenue bonds early because that affects the yield to the bondholders. So, so that turns out not to be an option, even though that would be simpler. This is slightly less simple, although not, not, not so much so, but the idea is, rather than having money sit around that may, you know, when, 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 when money is sitting around, it could be spent on who knows what. The idea is to focus it on core municipal services that are being delivered within the TERS, so that, so that, that, that funding is being used in that way. And I, I understand the concerns that council members Grady and two, and I think Mayor Protem Prince may, may have, may have raised about just seeing this during the meeting. This is obviously the, the first time we, as a council, have really dug into this. We saw a preliminary plan when we created the TERS in January of 2020. You know, obviously, we, we were not able to discuss it prior to the council meeting because of the Open Meetings Act, you know, that would have been a violation for us to discuss it before then. So naturally, this is the first time we're discussing it toward that end. If there is discomfort with passing this with these changes tonight, and, and if other council members would prefer, I'd be happy to withdraw my motion to, to pass, present it as amended, and, and substitute a motion to table if, if, if there's a preference for that, so that there's time to digest the proposal and consider it at our next meeting.
I'm ready to move forward.
Councilman Smith.
Sorry, didn't see. Let, let's end this on a positive note. First of all, to those of you in the audience, and, and anybody watching on Plano TV as your eyes are starting to glaze over with all this, the next time you drive by and you look at Collin Creek Mall and that pile of dirt, everything's going on there, I want you to think about these people. This is, this is one itsy-bitsy, teeny-weeny part of this whole plan that was put together. So you look at that, and you think about what has gone in manpower-wise and just creative thinking-wise of our staff to bring us to this point where we're now arguing about what we're going to do with excess money that comes up in the plan. So congratulations, well done. I agree, let's put this off so everybody be comfortable. But think about that. The next time you see Collin Creek Mall, everything that went into it to get us to the point we're at today. Thanks, Peter.
Peter, you haven't actually slept in a couple of years, right?
I have all one color hair.
Peter, I have a question, and since Deputy Mayor Protem has been very considerate in thinking about possibly table, withdrawing his motion and tabling. I wanted to know whether or not that would have any impact or any delay in the current development. I, I just want to make sure that this is not something that absolutely has to be considered and, and.
You know, I think pushing it up to the, the next meeting is not a problem. I don't believe that this would affect the critical path of the project. That was already approved earlier tonight with the service and assessment plans. So if you, if you want to wait till the first meeting in June, I think it's, it's more than fine.
Well, then, with that, if I may, I will withdraw my, my motion to approve, present it as amended, and instead make a motion to table.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion to table, Item T, with a second. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero to table, Item T. Thank you. Items for individual consideration.
Public hearing items. Applicants are limited to fifteen minutes presentation time with a five-minute rebuttal if needed. Remaining speakers are limited to thirty total minutes of testimony time with three minutes assigned per speaker. The presiding officer will amend these times as deemed necessary. Non-public hearing items. The presiding officer will permit public, public comment for items on the agenda not posted for a public hearing. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests, the length of the agenda, and to ensure meeting efficiency, and may include a cumulative time limit. Speakers will be called in the order the requests are received until the cumulative time is exhausted. Item number one. Public hearing and consideration of an ordinance as requested in zoning case 2020-16 to amend the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city, ordinance number 2015-5-2, as heretofore amended, expanding specific use permit number four for sewage treatment plant with restrictions, and granting specific use permit number 162 for service yard with restrictions on seventeen-point-one acres of land located on the east side of Los Rios Boulevard, one thousand thirty feet north of Fourteenth Street in the city of Plano, Collin County, Texas, presently zoned agricultural with specific use permit number four for sewage treatment plant. Directing a change accordingly in the official zoning map of the city, providing a penalty clause, a repealer clause, a savings clause, a severability clause, a publication clause, and an effective date. Applicant: North Texas Municipal Water District. This item was tabled at the April sixth and April twenty-sixth city council meetings.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Executives. I'm Christina Day, Director of Planning. And the applicant has submitted a letter requesting to table this item to June twenty-eighth, 2021 meeting in order to resolve some items discussed during a May seventh meeting with neighbors. I'm available for questions you might have regarding this item. But that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Day. Are there any questions for staff on this item? Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Christina, if I'm, if I'm correct remembering on this, that with, with the current agricultural zoning on the, on the property where the, the water plant now resides, the, would the district with that zoning be able to expand that plant on, onto other areas of this, of this lot without, you know, changing the zoning with, of the requesting the supplement, or would they still be confined to the, to the existing lot constrained for the water processing plant?
This is a request for a specific use permit to expand the treatment plant to allow them to build their operations building further to the west. And the zoning would continue to, it could be expanded, the S U P could be expanded further south because the, there was a second zoning request that would have limited that by rezoning additional property to the south, but that was withdrawn, consistent with, the, the district asked for that, but it was also consistent with public feedback.
Got you. So, so, so again, this, this doesn't include the, the, I'm trying to think, the geographical, the, the small parcel of land that, that the city sold to the district? This is, that's excluded from what we're being considered on the, the S U P?
Actually, this is part of that land, but it, it was subdivided. There's a, it's only the northern portion, not the southern portion of the property.
Okay, so, so again, if, let's, if the supplement, the request for the S U P was not being presented to us and being still agricultural zoned, that would allow for the expansion of the water treatment facility on the entire piece of land? Is that, am I correct in remembering that?
It would. Any, any place that's zoned agriculture allows by, an S U P request to, for, to a treatment plant.
Okay, great, great. I just want to be sure I remembered that correctly. Thank you.
That is correct.
Councilman Williams.
Yes, Christina. To make sure I'm understanding properly, the S U P that is requested to be extended, that includes the ability to build not just the admin building, but sewage, the purpose of sewage treatment plant as well. Is that correct?
There are restrictions included in the request that would limit it to not having additional treatment facilities.
Okay, so the admin building only, without the ability to extend the current footprint of sewage treatment facilities?
That is correct.
Okay, I, I'm unable to see the verbiage, because there was a request to table, and we didn't get that this time around. However, I'm, I'm, I'm not quite comfortable tabling this, because the letter citing the request to table said that it was to work on resolving some of the items discussed during the May seventh meeting with concerned neighbors. However, I'm given to understand that there was no additional discussion with those neighbors until a couple of hours ago.
The applicant is registered, and I believe could provide additional testimony.
That'd be great.
Okay. We, we've had a request to table this item till June twenty-eighth, but we do have some speakers. So I'd be glad to entertain each speaker for two minutes each, being that we're going to rehear this on June twenty-eighth. So if you'll read the speakers' names, we'd, we'd appreciate it.
Did you want to?
Yeah, I'll hear from the applicant first. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Okay, so that would be Mark Simon and/or Brad Williams.
Good evening, Councilman Mark Simon, Assistant Deputy for Engineering at North Texas Municipal Water District. The request to table for tonight is an extension of the request to table we made on April twenty-sixth. We did, in fact, have a meeting at our offices on April, or on May seventh with all the other speakers who are here at the meeting tonight. We spent about two and a half hours talking about the plant, what our plans were for the plant, what some of their concerns were. I think for us, why the meeting was different was that we had had two other previous public meetings, where we invited, in some cases, over three thousand people, and we had less than four attendees at one of them. This time, we had four attendees who had not previously participated in the process, and that provided us some additional feedback that allowed us to take some specific action items, including some items that our operations people have already started to address at the site. So we're, you know, respectfully requesting to table the item until June twenty-eighth to allow us time to work on the items that we can immediately address, and then also to make some adjustments to landscaping plan and some of the screening. I've been working with the City of Plano Urban Forester to talk about how we could collaborate on some additional screening along the north boundary by us providing either nursery stock or the funds for those types of trees, whether that would be useful for the Los Rios Park. So these are some of the examples of things that we're kind of trying to, to work on. But as you know, the request to table had to be presented, you know, by May seventeenth, and we met on May seventh, so we really only had five working days to fix all these problems before, you know, we had to either make a decision. So with that, I'll maintain any questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Oh.
I would appreciate if you could provide the information of the public hearing that you're going to have with the neighbors to the city council as well, because I, I'm kind of curious as what are some of the things that you, you know, you guys are presenting as solutions to some of the complaints or concerns of our residents? And I, I would like to hear it more than just from emails and texts, and I like to actually, like to see for myself. So if you could just provide the information, it'd be great.
Provide it through Plano staff, or like? Okay.
Yes.
Sure, that's no problem. We have, you know, some presentations we've given previously public as well, there's some, some updates we've been making recently.
Councilman Williams.
Yes, thank you very much. So how did the meeting on May seventh end with the neighbors? I mean, I, I understand it lasted for a couple of hours. A lot of things were discussed. How did it end? That on, I think it was eight working days later, but that you sent the request to table. But what was, what was the determination at the end of that meeting? What were the next steps?
So the next steps for us were, we were going to take a look at some of the items. Both myself, my landscape architect, and, and our attorney went to visit some of the, the neighborhood, of the newer, newer participants in the meeting. We've been working on some line of sight identification issues. And then we, we offered to continue to meet in, you know, a few months if there's additional concerns. You know, we've, we've shared quite a bit of information, both publicly. It's available on our website. Really, for us, this is about our staff, who works, you know, hard every day, really substandard conditions in, in many cases. And we want to do right by the neighborhood, and we, we know the challenges of operating the facility in, in that location. But, you know, at the end of the meeting, I think we, we agreed to continue to work with the neighbors and to address as many of their concerns as we could. And so we're trying to do that through more updates to the plan that, you know, that we're preparing, you know, for June twenty-eighth.
All right, thank you. Can you help me understand how the request to table until a month from now to work out items with the neighbors can happen when you're determined to follow up with the neighbors in a few months? I'm not seeing the connection.
Okay, so, so some of the items were related to lighting. We obviously couldn't replace all the lighting within, you know, five days. So we went out and did a survey and tried to identify, you know, what lights can we relocate, what changes can we make? You know, we still have safety and security of the site to contend with, and how do we manage that? So that's part of the plan, right? As far as the landscaping was concerned, we previously submitted that for an exhibit for the planning and zoning, but it's not at the stage of the process where the landscape plan is fully reviewed by staff. So we've made updates to the exhibit so that it could be shared with the council and see the extent of the landscaping that we're proposing for the site. So we, we've gone out and made some more adjustments. And again, I was there with the landscape architect last week trying to identify how we can manage the line of sight issues from the neighbors across the street, as well as contend with some of the overhead power lines that are in the area that, that we're going to have some constraints with. And then the northern boundary, of course, the property doesn't belong to us. It belongs to City of Plano. If you were to go out there to the site now, you would identify, you know, a number of trees that have died or been removed over a period of time that have exposed the, the facility if you were driving south from Los Rios. That was a comment that was brought up during the meeting. And so this is how I reached out to the Parks Department and the Urban Forester to talk about how we could collaborate and to address that side of the facility as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I represent the district. I wanted to make sure that Councilman Williams got his question answered. For the record, Brad Williams, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, North Harvard Street in Dallas. So, Councilman Williams, I think your question was, what's the connection between our request to table and a follow-up two months from now? I think you were wondering about that connection. And I think we're confusing some, some things that were said. We, during that meeting, suggested to the neighbors that were present that if they would like to set up a recurring meeting, you know, every so many months to check in with us as the district, to, to hear what their more recent experiences have been. with us as the district, to hear what their more recent experiences have been, how we're doing, what can we do for you today, give them updates. So there was a separate offer to, you know, regardless of what happens with the zoning case, to continue to meet with the neighbors after the zoning case is over. And I think that's the two months, maybe, that Mr. Simon mentioned and that you were asking about. The way we left the meeting was, we received some feedback, and we took it upon ourselves to huddle internally, study what could be done, figure out what we could do to try to solve some of those concerns, and we got to work immediately. I personally went to the site that afternoon after the meeting to take some pictures from the neighborhood to make sure we understood what their experience was, how they were experiencing the facility, so that we could get a good sense of what can we do, what should we do, to help mitigate their concerns. So we've actually been hard at work in the last two weeks since our meeting, trying to make some progress. We just need a little bit more time to make, make sure we can do that and bring to the council some more concrete results that we are just still in the process of formulating. So that's really the essence of the request.
Okay, thank you for that. So am I correct in understanding that the request to table was not to continue working with the neighbors until the June 28th meeting, but to investigate some of the items that were discussed at the May 7th meeting? Am I interpreting that correctly?
I think so. We want to continue to work with the neighbors in perpetuity. There's no, there's no expiration on our willingness to work with the neighbors. As it relates to the zoning case specifically, yes, the time between May 7th and June 28th is intended to give us enough time to formulate concrete commitments that we can bring to the council and to the neighbors and say, here's what we can do to try to address your concerns. We've had a chance to visit with some of them this evening to talk about that and gotten some more direction. So, you know, it's, the conversations that we're having are fruitful and beneficial, and we want the opportunity to continue to have them.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that. I imagine that the odor was a big topic of conversation at the May 7th meeting.
We talked a lot about that on May 7th, yes, we did.
Was there any determination about exploration of resolving that? It's been a big issue for a very long time.
The district is committed to working on the odor problem and mitigating that to the best of its ability. The engineers are going to need to tell you about what they're doing and what they can do. But there's, yeah, we've got some ideas for how to, to continue to improve on the odor, if you would like, Mr. Simon, to tell you about it.
Go ahead, Rick. I've heard, I've spoken with others with the district about the odors, but the only answer I've ever been given was basically odor control caps on the tanks. But my understanding is that overwhelmingly, the problem isn't with the tanks, it's from the sewers.
Well, that's nothing the district, I don't think, can control. Is that correct, Mark?
It would depend on the location. I mean, it could be part of our system, it could be part of Plano's system, and that's something that we would have to work with our partners at Plano to identify where that specific source is. As far as the plant is concerned, you know, the district has invested about $8 million in odor control since about 2012.
Can I interrupt, please?
Yeah.
I apologize, but this odor issue is really a separate issue from the zoning issue.
It needs to be a land use discussion.
You know, maybe you can have them back to talk about that at a different meeting, Mark.
And I would add that, you know, we've sent, many of you have gotten letters from us in the past, or emails from our old executive, interim executive director, and our current executive director, Jenna Covington, is here tonight. And we're open to meeting with any and every one of you to explain how the facility operates, what the plan is for the facility, how it's connected to the overall regional system that Plano's part of. I mean, we really are a partner with City of Plano, you know, in operating this facility and the overall, you know, regional wastewater system.
Councilman Smith?
And Paige, listen to what I'm going to ask and let me know if I'm okay on this. Thank you. I, I believe my question does actually deal with land use, because, I mean, we consider a lot of factors in considering land use, not the least of which is the effect on the surrounding areas, the effect on the neighbors and concerns there, because, I mean, we, we work for these people. We don't work for the water district, no offense, but these are our, these are our bosses. With that in mind, I don't know if you, if you folks were here tonight, when we had, a gentleman was here speaking earlier, Mr. Linden, I believe, and was, was talking about the, the single force main valve that we have and potential problem there. And the reason I'm asking this, because I'd like to get, since you're engineering, get, get your opinion on it for thinking about the land use aspect of this, is I think what's happening, what we're hearing, we're feeling, is there's, there's a lack of trust between the residents who, let's face it, I don't live there, you don't live, they live there, and, and the district, there's a lack of trust there. So could, could you at least, like, address that issue while you're here? Because I'm, I'm trying to understand this. I'm not an engineer, you are. And I believe Mr. Linden is a 40-year experienced wastewater engineer, so he probably knows more about it than, than most of us do. But I'd like to get an answer on that.
The issue is that the part of this that deals with the expanding for the sewage treatment plant is bringing it into compliance, because that was built a little bit over the line a long time ago. So that's why this odor issue is not really part of this zoning case.
Right, even though, even though it is on the land and they are using it.
Right. Because that's not what this zoning case is trying to do. Mark, do you want to address any of that?
So Councilman Smith and Councilman Williams, I think what we need is, is an opportunity to talk about the operational side of things, whether it is a force main, whether it is an odor control. I think what I'm hearing from council is a briefing on the operations side would help y'all to understand the background of how the, how the facility is actually being utilized, what some of the, the conditions are there. But that would be separate from this particular case. I think we can get some of that information back. I saw a letter come through, I think, late this evening from Mr. Williams, but we can get some of those operational issues addressed, either trying to arrange a special meeting to do some briefings via Zoom, so that we can do it as soon as possible to, to try to keep this on the time schedule we have available. But I do understand that those questions exist and it impacts, you know, the neighborhood, and y'all have questions along those lines. So I'm happy to arrange for briefings with the district.
Okay.
So I, I just want to say that I, you know, I was on planning and zoning for a long time. And to me, I think that it's important when you make land use decisions that you consider the environmental impact. And so I feel like this somewhat is considering the environmental health impact on the land use decisions. So, you know, I could see this as a little bit of a gray area. So I'm okay if we want to do something separate, but I wouldn't want to make a decision on this before some of the environmental health concerns that I personally have were addressed. So if we do that, I don't want it to be just an operational discussion. I think we need to, it needs to be looked at from an environmental health standpoint too, not just operations.
Sure. We're happy, happy to add that to the list.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is an extension specifically on what we're doing today, which is motion to table. And my question is an extension of Deputy Mayor Proten and Councilman Smith's question with regard to the concerns being addressed. So this item has been tabled twice already, and this will be the third time. Each time, I believe there was a reason because there is a concern that needs to be addressed, and then, I guess, a re, re-look at the zoning. And, and I guess my question is, why don't we do something that's, you know, to do a broader information gathering where people get more notice of information exchange and having the resident be notified way in advance so that they can have a chance to respond to, to air their, express their concern? Instead of this, you know, every two weeks, we come back and then it gets tabled again because somebody raised something that you haven't thought of. And also, in the meantime, allow, you know, council members to also hear all the concerns and be able to, I guess, express them or to deal with them in a, in a more informed setting. I, I just, I'm not hearing enough that's addressing the resident's concern. I'm not hearing enough in the environmental side, I'm not hearing enough in the, the land use side, and I'm, and I, I don't understand why we piecemeal these motion to table. So I'm asking you, is there a possibility of maybe tabling this a little bit longer so that we can actually get inform, information about what's going on?
So I'm not sure how much you know about the history because you didn't get a briefing from this day, but, you know, we had public meetings in November, we had public hearings in November, we had public hearings in December, we had a public meeting again in January, we had another public hearing in January. You know, we came before you, there was a, there was a procedural issue with a picture of a sign for the April 6th, and then the item was tabled for us. It wasn't a request to table. And this is how we ended up at the April 26th meeting, and it was, you know, recommended that we continue to do public outreach. We were able to arrange for a public meeting, but we couldn't get that accomplished before April 26th. So, I mean, this is part of the process. There has been public outreach. There's an active webpage that we update, you know, with meetings or any changes that we've been making to the site plans. This has all been publicly available. We have invited directly upwards of 100 people to each of these meetings, as well as through the City of Plano's Next Door participation, have notified homeowners associations, neighborhood associations. All of this was publicly available, and we, we just did not get the participation that we had hoped for.
I'm sorry, with all due respect, I mean, giving us information is different from addressing the concerns of the resident. So telling us that this is the way it's going to be versus, you know, we hear you and we're solving the problem, those are two different things. And I don't believe that these every-two-weeks type of tabling really is addressing the concerns of the resident. That's why they are writing us and they are telling us that they have concerns that's not being addressed. So what I'm asking you is whether or not there is a possibility of getting extended tabling in which information discuss, a true discussion can be had in which the concerns of the resident in that area can be addressed. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah. It's certainly not the district's intent to have it be a my way or the highway discussion. That's not at all the intention. If it's the council's pleasure that we table this case beyond June 28th, the district is amenable to that.
I think what, what I'm feeling, what I'm hearing, sensing from some of my colleagues and from the citizens that I've spoken with and heard from is that while this, this, you know, technically is about a building, as I mentioned, I feel like there's more environmental health concerns wrapped up in this decision for me personally. And I think that until those can be, as my colleague said, addressed, I think it's hard for us to move forward with a decision. So I think we want to have a better feeling that you're not just addressing landscape, you know, issues, that you're getting to the core root of, of the issue. And so that's really what I'm, I'm wanting to see, is addressing some of those deeper issues and concerns.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Following up on the comments that other council members have made, and I think specifically when, when you guys were responding to Councilmember Williams' questions, you talked about the process that you guys are going through right now, have been going through, and specifically are going through after the May 7th meeting with residents, asking yourself the question, what can and what should we do to mitigate these concerns? I heard a mention of concrete commitments. I was wondering if you guys could provide some examples of issues that, or features of, of the request that, that the district is open to changing, specifically what you're looking at right now that you would continue looking at if given the extra time through, through a tabling?
Sure. I'll take a stab at it, and then if I forget anything, Mark, jump in there. But the one that we've already made progress on, as Mark said, was the lighting. We heard from the neighbors early on in our meeting that we've got a glare issue, and we said, good to know, we will look into that. And so we sent our ops people out there one evening, you know, went into the neighborhood, took a look, realized, yeah, we've got some, some pole lights that could be pointed in a better direction to be less impactful. Those have actually been removed. Those four lights that we identified have been removed, so they are no longer functional on the property at all. Thereafter, we're going to look into adding some lights that are much lower, so it will cast, you know, less light out generally, and then remove even more of the pole lights on the property. So that's what we're studying. We have already purchased some of the material to accomplish that. We just don't have it all yet. So again, we'd like to be able to come back to the council and say, hey, we've solved the light problem, we've done all these things, and not just, we intend to do them. We want to be able to tell you that we have done it. We did hear about screening and visibility and how the, how the facility looks from the neighborhood and as you're driving down Los Rios. So we said, let us re-look at our landscape plan, as Mark said. We had our landscape architect visit the site again, look at line of sight items, things like that. And as I said, the, the district is committed to continuing to improve the odor situation as technology and as funds permit.
Well, thank you for that response. And so just to recap, if we vote to table tonight and the district is given extra time to work on the residents' concerns, the, the plan that we end up considering after tabling would not be the same plan that's currently before us. There would, there would be changes made to respond to the residents' concerns.
The landscape plan that we are proposing, which is not part of the zoning request, but I believe staff want an opportunity to look at that prior to any council consideration, that will be different. I'm not sure that the S U P itself will have anything that's meaningfully different. There is a very important condition in the S U P that relates to expansion of treatment process units outside of the existing geographic boundary of the plant. So although the S U P boundary is being pushed out to Los Rios Boulevard, where the office building will be located, it's a very clear condition in the S U P that we cannot expand any treatment units past what is out there today, as of January 1st. So that's a very important condition, I think, for the council and the neighbors to understand, is that this is, there's no hidden plan to, to shoehorn more stuff as part of this request. And it's, you know, to leak out closer to Los Rios Boulevard. The intention is to keep the process units where they are located today, within that geographic boundary. So I think that goes to maybe your question, Councilman Smith, a little bit earlier on. I want to make sure we got it really addressed. So I, I'm not sure that the, that those S U P conditions would be different. We will happily consider any suggestions from staff or the neighbors about how to make that condition better or stronger or more secure or something like that, if that's, if somebody has something to offer, we'll absolutely consider it.
Sure. Well, thank you for that answer. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Councilman Williams?
Yes, just to provide a little clarification, I'm sure not you didn't get very good attendance at any of your meetings or open houses, however you term them, but about 100 or so Plano residents responded in opposition to this before the planning and zoning case was heard. I'm looking at about five pages of them. Now, I don't know if they all live in the neighborhood, but they all do live in Plano.
Yeah, we're aware of that.
Well done.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Val?
Uh-huh. I have a question. You were, you mentioned about the process units. What do we as a council have the power? Just, you are saying that you are not going to expand it, but what if you do? Like, are you going to notify us? What kind of power do we have if you do so in the future? Because I think there's a mistrust that one of the council member commented already.
Yeah, no, and we talked about that mistrust at our May 7th meeting. And some of the residents have lived in this neighborhood for a very long time and were involved in district meetings that took place in the 1980s. And, you know, it's our understanding that, you know, things were said that weren't ultimately followed through with, and that's regrettable. None of us were involved. So there's only some which we can do today to apologize for whatever may have been said in, in those meetings at that time, but it's our commitment today not to repeat, not to repeat that and to make sure that the city has a way to enforce the S U P condition. And then that's, that's what it would be. If the, if the district were to violate a term of the S U P, the city has its usual zoning enforcement opportunities as part of that S U P.
Yeah, I agree. I think most of us understand that the hesitation that we have, you know, approving this request is that this is kind of the only opportunity for the council to really, you know, look into this, to help, you know, all these issues being addressed, even though they may not be directly related. But I think they are kind of the environmental concerns and health concerns. So if we don't address these issues now, you know, the residents don't feel this could ever be, you know, trustworthy, addressed in the future, right? You know, what do we have kind of to hold you guys accountable for this? That's why we have reservations for all this.
Well, I suppose I'm, I'm, my, my answer to your question might depend on what it is you are wanting to hold us accountable for.
Well, so for, first of all, you mean, the odors needs to be, you know, you know, treated so that the, this is the first, you know, right away thing, right? So the odors cannot be present, and that's a big nuisance for the residents. And second- cannot be present, and that's a big nuisance for the residents. And second of all, it's very important that the plant cannot expand your treatment capacity, right? Because it's just, it's limited. You have newer, you know, treatment, you know, areas up to the north, and that's a very big commitment the residents need you guys to deliver, basically. And then there's others, but you mentioned about the lighting, that seems to be easier to do, and that's not that hard. Peak Flow project, right? The ongoing Peak Flow. So there are so many things tied into this. You don't come in front of us often.
Yeah.
Right? And that's why.
We would have to think about how to best accomplish that with maybe consultation with your city attorney and city staff on how to address some of these items.
I personally don't think we can approve it, you know, without the whole thing being, you know, addressed, because it is healthcare, health concern, environmental concern. It's all bundled together. It's not a simple, just a SUP or rezoning thing.
And Mayor, Council, we will work with Jenna Covington and Mark and staff to, to arrange a briefing on the operational side. We, we know that council has a number of questions that they want to be able to get into on the health and safety and, and those operations. We will arrange for a time, hopefully very soon, to be able to have that, have that for council so that you can dig, dig deeper into those issues.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. We'll have a vote in just a minute. We're going to let these speakers speak, and then we'll make a decision on the table.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, if I could, if, if the motion to table, for whatever reason, does not pass, we would appreciate the opportunity to revisit with the council. And if we wind up having a hearing tonight, we want the chance to give you a more complete presentation about the request, since you didn't have the benefit of it from staff.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
We have some speakers, Scott.
We do. The first one is Cassandra Bowle.
Good evening. Cassandra Bowle, 4120 Sonora Drive, Plano, Texas. I do want to express my thanks to Executive Director Covington, Engineer Simon, and the North Texas Municipal Water District Council Williams for meeting with the residents. The three and a half hour meeting on May 7th was informative, and it was especially helpful to get to meet two more families who resided close to the plant 10 years plus. Many issues above and beyond landscaping were discussed, including the pernicious odor problems and the lack of onsite spill containment, critical to the safe operation of the plant. This safety net kept the February spill at Wilson Creek from being more serious. The proposed site plan will increase impervious land to 355,000 square feet, eight acres. So our opposition to this expanded SUP is more than merely aesthetics. The proposed location requires not only its footprint of the building, but two new drives and two parking lots. All but the existing maintenance drive will occur on land outside of the current USUP and on land that is permeable and protected by 40 feet mature trees and land berms. This loss of permeable land further directs excess rainwater or spill downhill to the Los Rios Park floodplain. Merely capping the capacity, which has been promised many times over the decades, is not due diligence by the city and the North Texas Municipal Water District. The onsite capacity must be reduced so that employees and residents are better protected. We have good faith that a better plan can be found without expanding the SUP. Thank you.
The next speaker is Scott Linden, and then he'll be followed by Kathy Alexander.
I'm Scott Linden, 3905 Bandera Drive. I guess my concern are three things. First of all, this has been going on for nine months, and the district has brought it to the P&amp;Z. 112 people signed up on the website. That does not count the people that filled out the forms. Substantial residential resistance to the building and to the zoning case. And I was in that meeting, and when we left, the offer was to meet in five months, nothing else. We were very disappointed in that. And then, and then we see that they've asked to table this, this case. So it's been a long time, and I would like to see the thing eventually, take a look at the zoning case itself. My concern is the SUP expansion. What is a process unit? Is an equalization tag a process unit? All the definitions, because I feel like TCQ and Texas Water Development Board has jurisdiction of a sewage treatment plant site. I don't see that the city has the jurisdiction to control that. Those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know I'm going to sound like a broken record. I'm Kathy Alexander. I'm at 2117 Leon Drive. And when you drive into our subdivision or visit the Krogers, you know that something is dead in the area, and it's really not dead, it's just a treatment plant. But my concern is the building being so close to Los Rios Boulevard. In that building, they're going to put a lab, and from the treatment plant, they're going to be bringing samples up into that office building for testing. That's, I just hate the very thought of that. And the fact that we have trucks going in and out of Los Rios Boulevard instead of over on 14th Street where the garbage delivery housing is, that would be much more conducive, excuse me, conducive to our neighborhood. I'd, I'd like for you to consider not tabling this and not approving it. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Dunshee, followed by Tiffany Dunshee.
Good evening, Council. Thank you. I'm David Dunshee. I'm at 4021 Hidalgo Drive in East Plano. We live right across the street from the water treatment facility. I sent some pictures to the city secretary earlier today, a view from my property. I'm afraid I don't, not able to present them. However, there's a clear line of sight issue that the district has addressed during the May 7th meeting that we had with them. So that was very encouraging, the meeting that we had with them. But we're here as East Plano residents, here to ask for help, because we feel vulnerable as residents. We don't feel protected from what goes on at the water treatment center and what we're subjected to as residents in East Plano. The, we have been, my wife and I have been in this house for 24 years, and we have had the exposure of the odor for that long. It's, it is something that comes and goes, and it, it changes with the winds, and we can't plan outdoor gatherings, we can't do things, we can't use our property the way we want to. Yet, we're, we're expected to just give a nod when they want to change the property or expand it at a building or whatnot. So we're really asking for better oversight. The SUP gives you the authority in, in your ordinance to, to enforce smells, odors, whatnot, if it's enforced. And there is no enforcement mechanism right now. As you mentioned, Councilman, Councilwoman Bow, that there is no mechanism for the district to be held accountable for new processing units or any footprint, you know, growth at that facility. As residents, we don't know what that looks like. We don't know what an expansion looks like. All we know is that the smell could get worse, and we're just, that's why we brought it up with the zone. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name's Tiffany Dunshee. Thank you for your time. I'm at 4021 Hidalgo Drive with David. I guess my biggest concerns that I would like to focus on are the fact that city council does have some sort of authority right now to enforce an ordinance, the ordinance 2.403, which can impose safeguards against many of the issues we now face, whether it's an unpleasant visual that you see coming down Los Rios. You know, the water treatment center is right after Los Rios Estates. And, you know, I have a fear of the building being the next landmark that you see, right? When you pass the landmark of Los Rios Estates, it's not going to be pleasant. And yes, it can be covered up, hopefully. But my bigger concerns are the emissions and the odor, in particular, what's causing the odor, and that there isn't anything in place, to my knowledge, to update or to monitor the emissions if something's at an unhealthy level. And I know there are, just as there is a move to update this building to make it safer for the employees, I think probably there is technology to also monitor the emissions so that they're kept at a safe level, and you don't ever smell anything. You know, I wouldn't be standing here if I had ever, hadn't ever smelled anything, because there wouldn't be an issue. And I suspect there is a way to cure the emissions problem. A bigger concern I have is that expanding the SUP would allow the water district to, I guess, have the jurisdiction of that land transferred from the city to them, and that we would no longer, that you would no longer have a say what goes on, on that land. And neither would we. So I don't know that there is a solution here. I mean, we can put as many screens up and, as we want to cover over problems, but I don't know if it's best to approve this at all. I can't see a solution with the way it's presented right now in the zoning case. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Shiraz Khan, and then Kim Imel. Our Imel will be followed.
Thank you, everyone, for giving an opportunity to speak today. Well, I believe the, the main issue that, that I'm concerned about, and this is not just myself, but the same, I have 93 neighbors in my community who have signed, it's an online petition, and it also speaks to the same ordinance, I think, the one that was just mentioned, 2.403, and specifically with the smell, the odor. I think almost all of the neighbors who have mentioned this, this is within my community alone, is that they are concerned not just about the odor, but how it affects, affects them, how it affects their children, the quality of life, and as well as the property values in the area. I moved in this neighborhood about nine years ago. I moved from California, and the first thing that hit me just right around the corner of 14th and Los Rios was that smell. I was living in an apartment, in Los, Los Rios apartments, as I moved there, before I decided to move into a home. And I was told that is, that's perhaps the garbage facility, and I reported at that time, and I had to report when the smell came, and I did that. But there was really nothing that followed up after that. As the years went by, that smell was still there, it kept coming. It's the same thing. It's not, you know, really it's coming from the sewage, or it's coming from the, whether it's coming from the plant itself. I do believe it's coming from the plant, because it's the same smell. If you pass through there, you go to my neighborhood, which is about two blocks further down, the smell doesn't change. What changes is that in, it happens at different times, and mostly happens in summer. So I'm, I'm going to end up here, just, just wanted to say that as my neighbors, you know, as the city has an obligation to enforce this ordinance, and I hope that you do the right thing, I'm asking that we do not table this and make a decision on it.
Thank you.
I'm Kim Imel from 4020 Hidalgo. We're the closest neighbor to the sewer treatment plant, and we've lived there 35 years. So we have a direct view of the treatment plant. And I was actually encouraged after our meeting with the director and her two cool hearts, because they moved their new building back further, and they had planned on having new trees and new berm, and they were really going to try and work with the neighbors. They just let us know this evening that the trees are out, because they're going to hit wires. So the trees are out, maybe bushes, but the smell has been better than it was 35 years ago, but it's not great still. And my concern, and the reason I voted no twice when the zoning commission sent us notes, was because that seven acres needs to be guaranteed not to be expanded on for additional facilities as far as sewer treatment plants. And unfortunately, they bought it anyway, they got it through the zoning. So, because they did, and you guys can't guarantee that the, that in 10 years, and a new regime won't add facilities. And that's my concern. So I'm worried about that.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Paul McFarland. They said he had to leave, so there are no other speakers.
All right. So back to our motion. Does anybody have a motion for me?
Deputy Mayor. I have a few additional questions for the applicant in response to the points raised by the residents, if, if I might ask those. I'll try to keep it quick. I know it's nine o'clock, but thank you for the opportunity, Mayor, to, to ask these questions, and, and thank, thank you all for, you know, in advance for the answers. So some, some very specific and very serious concerns were just raised by the residents who, who spoke during the public hearing. And I believe in, in working things out and finding common ground, and, you know, the zoning cases, we've had success with that approach. The Archgate-Montessori case comes to mind. That being said, I'm not willing to vote to table just to kick the can down the road. So I, I want to make sure that there, there really is room to, to work on these issues that the residents have, have raised. So the, the first, there was a mention of traffic, and obviously ingress egress is something we frequently look at in, in zoning cases. You know, a preference for trucks being on 14th Street, large trucks being on 14th Street rather than Los Rios. Is there a way to work on the proposed plan such that trucks would, would come through off of 14th Street and cut through to, to this building? Or is, is additional large truck traffic on Los Rios an inevitable consequence of, of this zoning request?
First, I'm going to let Mr. Simon answer the, the specific truck question, but the very last part of your question, I think, needs to be clarified. There's really not a whole lot about the truck traffic that relates to this zoning request.
Okay.
Right? Because all we're doing with the request is the office building. So from an operational truck traffic standpoint, we're not really expecting any changes as a result of the zoning case. But I'll let Mr. Simon tell you the issues with trucks being diverted to 14th Street.
Sure.
Right. So as Brad said, you know, we're not anticipating any additional traffic. We've actually modified the plan. There's two entrances now for the staff to come into the site off of Los Rios. The issue with the truck traffic is related to the sludge hauling to the landfill. And we are looking at options to take it to 14th Street. I will tell you that as the site is currently constructed, it is not possible. I will tell you that as the site is currently constructed, it is not possible. Okay? And the main reason for that is, and this would be something we would have to talk to you about in the operational discussion, there is a very large concrete box, okay? Probably bigger than your rotunda here. And almost all of the sewage coming into the plant goes through that box. So, we am working on trying to figure out how we can divert those flows temporarily and then permanently, so that the flow can continue through the plant, and we can make that space available for widening the road. And that is an area that's referred to as the service yard, when you see the plan. There is an opening right now that is, I believe, about 16 feet. And I believe for public safety reasons, we would want that road to be about 24 feet. So, this is kind of the space we're talking about trying to gain in that general area. There's, of course, another option available where we could approach the adjacent landowner about acquiring their property from them, which would be the athletic fields.
And for the sake of clarification, because the box that you're referring to is obstructing our ability to drive over that area, right? It's in that pinch point.
Okay. So, thank you for that answer. Then, just a few others. There were, I think, a couple mentions of trees. And Ms. Imel, I believe it was, mentioned that trees that were being lost, if the zoning case were to be approved, had initially been scheduled to be replaced, but that's now out because they would hit wires. I understand if wires would impact the location of trees, but is the district committed to replacing trees that are, that are cut down?
Yeah. So, we're developing that landscape plan that we'll be providing to the staff. The confusion with what Ms. Imel told you, I think she was reporting to you something I said to her this evening, which is she asked me specifically about trees located precisely under some overhead utility lines. And I had to clarify that we can't put trees there for encore reasons. But that has no effect or impact on all of the other trees and all the other landscaping outside of the encore resements that we are intending and proposing to install, including on the berm that's already there to help screen the office building, which will already be 18 feet below the berm. So, there was, I think, a miscommunication there. We're not, we're not removing any trees that were previously promised.
Sure. So, if we were to vote to table tonight, before we voted on the zoning again, the landscape plan would reflect replacement of trees that are being lost due to any potential rezoning that the council might grant?
Correct. I don't, I don't know right off the top of my head exactly how many caliber inches that were being lost that we're adding. I don't know. But we are planting a lot of new landscaping, including trees.
Yeah. Just to clarify, you know, Brad was referring to, if you have a certain line of sight and we have power lines running this way, I can't put the tree directly under the line.
Right, right.
So, the strategy is, how can we stagger them? But based on the original plan that was submitted as an exhibit for the P and Z, and the plan that I was working with landscape architect Friday, we have actually added additional trees to the top of the berm that provide additional height beyond the trees that were already there. No trees were removed. And then we added additional screening trees near the entrances so that if you're coming north on Los Rios, you won't be able to see diagonally to where the building is located, which is actually below the street level, in case you're not aware. The building is actually not visible from the street level.
Okay. Well, thank you for that response. And then also, Mr. Linden raised a question about what is considered a process unit? Specifically, does an equalization tank count as a process unit? Obviously, would you be okay with tightening up, if we were to table this, tightening up the language about process units to make absolutely clear that really essentially only O1 office uses would be permitted on, on the land on which the S U P was expanded to?
Yeah. We had a lengthy discussion at the end of our meeting on the 7th about the S U P language. And, and I specifically committed to Mr. Linden that we would share that language with him if he didn't already have it. And if he had any suggestions for how to make it stronger, that he should let us know so that we can work through it. And that was in my correspondence to the neighbors this afternoon as well. So, absolutely, we want to figure out how to do that and make sure that we do it in a way that is strong, but also accurate for what we're trying to, what we intend.
Fantastic. And then finally, if we were to vote to table tonight, would the district commit to monthly meetings with the residents? Because, you know, there's been concerns raised about, you know, there was, and there may, I know, I know based on what y'all are saying, it sounds like there may not have been a meeting of the minds there, but, you know, there was discussion about five months, you know, and then maybe that would be after, you know, after we would already have voted on the, on the request. Would the district be willing to commit to monthly meetings during the pendency of the zoning request? I understand that may, that may be too frequent in perpetuity, but during the pending, a pendency of the zoning request?
Yes.
Okay. Very good, very good.
So, we're always available to meet, you know, the, I think, it was interesting, we had the meeting at our offices mainly because we don't have actually sufficient space at the location to actually meet. There's not actually a meeting that can hold the number of people we had, which was only 12, right? So, you know, I think, you know, our view of it is, is that we're always willing to meet with neighbors that have concerns about the operation. There are things that we don't necessarily perceive because we're inside and not outside. And we understand that they have concerns. We try to address them as best we can. You know, there's been a lot of discussion about odor, and I don't discount it. There is a challenge with odor in that, the sensitivity of a person to odor versus what our ability is to regularly measure it, right? Some people are more sensitive than what we can regularly monitor. And what, and there's not a regulatory limit other than for safety reasons. We monitor daily at all the process locations, right? We monitor at the fence line regularly. You know, Jen and I were talking a couple of weeks ago. We took over 1,000 samples between when we started this case in November and when we got through the, through the tabling in April. And we had nine times where we found at least one of the eight odor control, control locations we have had a positive number. So, that's, you know, less than 1%. And so, we know there's still a sensitivity to that, and we're trying to figure out a way that we can take the best available technology we have now, apply whatever else is available. Maybe there's another source that we're not identifying. Maybe there's a source outside the facility that we need to go further outside our boundary and look for. But that's kind of the challenge with, with addressing that issue. And the only other thing is, is we've proposed a change in the treatment process related to how we manage our sludge. And what that will allow us to do is have enclosed processing of the sludge inside of an actual process unit. Instead of having to evacuate the airspace inside the building, it will be a closed system of multiple units. And these are the kinds of things that we try to look through on the engineering basis. But, you know, that was one step we took forward. I was talking to Brad and Jenna last week about, we have two locations that use passive odor control. This is very common throughout the distribution system. Plano probably has some of these. It's essentially a carbon canister. And you can understand maybe the challenge with those is that they absorb odors for a long time, and then they don't. So, we go and regularly monitor them. At the site, we may be able to look at alternatives where we can connect some of those passive systems to an active system that's regularly treating the odor, either through a biological or chemical process. So, this is kind of the steps that we're trying to go through to identify which location and then which source is, is where we might be having some excursions.
Well, oh, sorry. Say, thank you very much for that information. I appreciate those answers.
And it's very, I mean, it's a little complicated, the science, but, you know, if we have the operational discussion, we can show you some of the improvements that we've made recently at the, at the site as part of the current peak flow process.
Thank you again for the information, and I appreciate the offer. So, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I heard properly what you said a couple of minutes ago. If I understood correctly, you're saying that the instruments which you use to measure the odor can't really always detect what a person can. Was that accurate?
Yeah. So, as a general rule, field deployment instruments measure around a part per million. Some people have sensitivities below that, in the part per billion.
Okay. So, is it eight or nine times, I guess, that you took measurements, that it registered a positive result, I guess you said?
It registered at least one part per million.
Okay. So, I guess those must have been on really bad days. If they, if your instruments were less sensitive than the average human to register that.
It could have been at like one location out of eight, right? So, when they say that we had nine positives, that's, you know, if you take 1,000 samples, it's, you know, we take on a given day, right?
I think, I think we need to really rein in this operational conversation. I'm sorry.
We're always happy to talk about the process.
We should have it sometime, but...
Just want to make sure I understood what you said.
Yeah. With the environmental concerns, we have to distinguish between a legal use that is already there and that is having issues operationally, and then some things that can be mitigated through the S U P, like adding a service yard that gives them closer proximity to maybe treating things like that. So, those are two different things. And the city manager said he would bring that back to you. I did also want to note, because it was mentioned several times, that the reference that is being used, 2.403, is an old ordinance, but it's essentially now codified as 6.100.3 in our new ordinance. So, I just wanted to get that cleared up for, for the, because I know y'all take a lot of notes. And just to let y'all know too, and we can send them a link to it if we have their email.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one final, I guess, comment and question. I think as you probably realized, that we take the, the safety and comfort of our residents very seriously. And with that in mind, executive director is here. I have a question for you. Kind of an old saying is, "The boat stops here, that's you." So, what I'd like to ask you is, what's your commitment as the director to be sure that these concerns that the residents have get taken care of? And I know you're, you're starting the meetings, and that's a good, you know, good start, but what commitment can you tell them that you're willing to do to be sure that these things that they're worried about get, get taken care of?
So, the services that we provide on a daily basis are basic services of water, wastewater, and solid waste. And we are very proud of the work that we do to protect public health. The work that we do in this industry has had the biggest impact on protecting public health around this country in the last 100 years as anything. And so, that's what we're about, is public health. So, as, as we talk about safe drinking water and cleaning wastewater, to discharge it into our waterways and have safe waterways in our communities, that's something we're really passionate about. And we understand that in the wastewater business, we need to do that while being good neighbors. And that's something that we work really hard to do.
Right. And I'll agree with that, you know, as having toured the wetlands, you know, project that you have, fabulous. And I mean, using old technology, new technology to do clean water in a natural fashion. So, I know you have the capability to solve these issues, but you just have, to have the commitment and the will to see that it gets done. So, I'm not doubting your capability to do it, if I just, you know, wanted you to commit to seeing it through, that it does get done for the, you know, for the residents.
Yes, absolutely. We are committed to being good neighbors. We take significant measures to do that on a daily basis. And we are open ears and ready to listen and act to do what's feasible to continue down that roadway. So, that is something that we're happy to continue to meet with you all on a monthly basis through the course of the planning and zoning case. And then we're also willing to meet with you on a more ongoing basis as time goes forward. So, that's something that we are happy to do. We did meet some of our closer neighbors at the most recent public meeting, or not public meeting, but the one at our office, that we had not previously met. And it was really good to hear from them and hear their experiences and how we can improve that situation at their personal homes. So, that's something that we're committed to. There was a question asked earlier, what was the sense of the meeting at the end of it? And I thought it was really positive. Like, people actually stood around and visited at the end of the meeting. It seemed to me as though it was a very positive meeting, and we had identified a number of things that we could do to make their situation better. So, I was happy and pleased with the outcome of the meeting and look forward to continuing to work toward being a good neighbor as we move forward.
Thank you. Councilman McGrady?
Mr. Mayor, I think that this discussion has been exceptional. There has been a lot of topics that we have talked about, and I think that it's worth continuing this discussion on this topic and making good decisions as we move into the future. I believe that we are probably looking at maybe some less than good decisions that had been made 75 to 100 years ago, as the city of Plano began to develop from a town to a city. And the sewage treatment facility, which was three open ponds next to 75 on the west side, was moved in 1949, 1950, to its current location. And then decisions were made to sell the farmland in between where the city ended, which was two miles west, and the sewage treatment plant was two miles east, to build residence on. And I don't know if that was always a, you know, those, those types of decisions are always good from the standpoint that it is very much like selling land next to an airport and then wondering why everybody doesn't like airplanes. So, I think that we need to make good decisions as we move forward on all of these issues, especially with the building and other operations of the plant. And therefore, I think that we need to have a continued discussion to find the right solutions for everyone concerned. We won't have that by denying it. So, I'm going to make the motion that we table this item and continue the discussion, and continue the discussion until we find a solution, then we can bring the item back.
What date?
I'm going to table it at this point, June 28th, with the understanding that we still have, may have discussions to be had. If we still have discussions to be had, I don't think it's a bad idea that we keep moving it out so we get the right solutions.
I would like to, if it's possible, I don't know whether or not the procedure is correct. I'd like to amend that. I don't believe one month out is going to resolve the issues that's currently facing the residents. So, I'd like to amend the motion.
There's a meeting on July 26th and August 9th.
What about the end of?
Because, you know, you're on a break a little bit in July for summer.
So, August 6th.
August 9th.
I'm sorry, August 9th.
I'd be amenable to that adjustment and amendment.
And I would second the motion with the amendment.
Okay. So, we have a motion to table the item until August 9th. Have a motion as second? You guys mean all of that? Okay. All right. Motion passes 6 to 2. Thank you. Next item.
Item number two, consideration of R F B number 2021-253B for Collin Creek Culvert Improvements, project number 6804.1, for the Engineering Department to Regal Inc. in the amount of $22,980,671, and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Good evening. Caleb Thornhill, Director of Engineering. Just wanted to give you a little bit of background on this project. You've probably heard of it before, but this is the Collin Creek Culvert Rehabilitation or Renovation Project. The culvert project will be approximately 2,200 feet per barrel, and there's three barrels, so just under 7,000 linear feet of improvement. The improvement itself will be 14 inches of shotcrete or a liner through each of those tunnels. We anticipate it to last about 14 to 16 months. The culverts are owned and operated or maintained by the city of Plano. So, this is something that we have to do. The culverts were installed in the early 80s. I think it was actually '79 and '80. And obviously, the opportunity with the development under construction, from an impact standpoint, we felt like this was a good opportune time. And obviously, with the age nearing over 40 years, we have been told that the... the age nearing over forty years, we have been told that the design engineer indicates that this will be a fifty-year life extension of the project. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Councilman? Any motion?
Motion to approve.
Second? Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve item number two. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero, thank you very much. With that being said, there being no further business, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.